Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to those that are here and those that might be joining us live stream. Today's meeting is going to be more of a retreat-style format, and this is to allow for more board discussion on the important topic of student achievement and all of the factors that support student success. We have allocated a large block of time for the discussion, and our goal today is to begin this discussion and think of it as a series of discussions with several parts. Of note, we've set aside January the 9th as another large block of time for another, what I would call, a mid-year check-in. I expect that from today's meeting, we may have smaller sessions and discussions on specific topics as we work up to the January meeting and make sure that we take note of that. I know that several of us have had the opportunity to attend a variety of conferences recently as it regards student achievement and school improvement, and one of the items that I was able to attend, they shared a story with us that I wanted to share with all of you and allow it to set some of the framework and context for the discussion that we're about to have. But the story revolves around a river, and at the end of the river, there's a bank, and there are people swimming in the end of the river, and there's folks that are aligned on the side of the bank. One of the individuals on the side of the bank is a very good swimmer, and they notice that there's somebody in the river that's struggling. They're drowning. So, the person jumps in, saves the person, and brings him to the shore. As soon as he brings that individual in, he sees another person that's drowning. He jumps back in the water and tries to save them and brings them back to shore. There's another person, and another person, another person. By the time he gets to the fifth person that he's done rescued, he walks away, and you can see him going up. And the individuals are screaming out to him, "Hey, there's somebody else in the water, and they need your help. Where are you going?" And he says, "I'm going up the river to try to prevent the people from falling in." And the reason that I share this for you is because, as a board, it's very easy for us to focus on the ends. But the reality is that that's what we're required to focus on as it relates to SOLs, to graduation rates, and to accreditation. Over the past few months, we have had presentations from Dr. Boone and staff sharing this past year's data as it compares to years prior and as it compares to the state. We are aware of the new accreditation standards that are a state requirement. We are aware of the Virginia Profile Graduate, which is another state requirement. We're learning about that. And we're also learning about the new ESSA standards, which is a federal requirement. As a board, we also recognize and we care about educating the whole child with a focus, God bless you, on development, social-emotional behaviors, and promoting healthy physical and nutritional options. There is no magic perfect plan, no magic bullet for a perfect plan. And just as anyone who has been on a successful diet will tell you, long-term success begins with lifestyle changes and with continuous encouragement and monitoring along the way. And in the end, you've done more than just lose weight, you have made a lifestyle adaptation. So before us, we have an accountability plan, one with goals and priorities that has been carried on from the past board. We have overarching goals that has identified needs within it. It has baseline data and targets that are embedded. As we discuss this plan, I want us to make it ours. I want it to be cognizant of the immediate need of the swimmers that are in danger at the end of the river, and I want it to be proactive in addressing those before they jump in. So I share that with you all to give some context to the discussion that we are about to have, and I look forward to hearing everyone's thoughts on it. So I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. Boone to begin our discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. As Dr. Gabriel has just shared and laid out for us, this afternoon's discussion is on the School Board Accountability Plan. During the governance training early in October, I walked the board through the crosswalk of documents as it relates to the Accountability Plan, and we spent a very brief time looking at what's in our dashboard. Today, our goal is to deepen that conversation and the understanding around the purpose of an Accountability Plan in terms of helping to guide a school board's work and the various discussions within the district. Supporting today's presentation is Dr. Karen Bailey, Ms. Jacqueline Chavis, and Mr. Dennis Foody, all who have a significant role in terms of how we address the Accountability Plan and, more importantly, how we set goals, benchmarks, but also how we implement an instructional program that's designed to improve the academic outcomes for all of our students. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and Dr. Gabrielle, and members of the board. I did create a few slides for us just to help clarify some points that I think that will be important as we discuss the Accountability Plan and the Dashboard Report. Certainly, the purpose of the School Board's Accountability Plan is to help guide the school board's work and discussions with the district. The Accountability and School Improvement Plans help to connect the work and progress to state and federal standards, or accountability systems. And as part of that plan, we have key performance indicators that have been identified by the previous board, where most of them fall within the state and federal accountability structure, such as our SOLs, chronic absenteeism, on-time graduation. The previous board also wanted to add additional KPIs that they felt would be indicative of a high-performing district. Those include HR measures about teachers and retention, climate information, and various stakeholders. So what you see here is your accountability structure as it exists today with the three school board goals and the focus areas, and most of that we have already presented. So we have our key performance indicators that are associated with our targets, and what I wanted to share with you are thought or our strategy behind creating those targets. In previous years, those that you are familiar with, Dr. Simpson's Comprehensive Accountability Plan, we said we wanted to have all of our schools fully accredited. We wanted to close all gaps by 2010, and that was associated with NCLB. What our previous board wanted to do, because we no longer have that stipulation, but we knew that ESSA and the state were changing their accountability systems, so we wanted to look at what would be reasonable, what would be feasible for a yearly target goal, and that was the thinking behind that. For some areas such as SAT and ACT, PSAT, we just said that we would meet or exceed the state averages. Just a quick example for illustration purposes, primarily for the SOLs. We decided that we would create ranges associated with the increase in percentage point. So, for example, if you look at the SOL content area of English, the state and federal benchmark is 75 percent. Our ESSA pass rate is 69 percent, our combined rate 73 percent, and our combined target is 75 percent. And because 73 percent falls within the range of 70 to 74, we felt it would be reasonable to increase by two percentage points. So while we talk about plans and so forth, I'm going to let Ms. Chavis just share with you how the various plans, accountability, strategic plan, and whatnot filter down from the school board, the district, and then to the schools.
So what you have in front of -- good afternoon. What you have in front of you, this particular slide, is a sample page from the School Improvement Plan. And within that plan, there are four essential actions. The one that's posted here is to implement, as you know, as was presented to you a few meetings back, our literacy plan, because based on our district data and the needs of our district and our students, we developed then this to be a component of each school's improvement plan around not just monitoring the plan, but making sure that plan is implemented appropriately at the school level. And so when you look at the template that's provided to principals, and this is one from a school, you can see that we have the essential action. Below that, as any plan would have, it would be the task associated with achieving that action or performing that action, the people responsible, who's going to be responsible for both implementing as well as monitoring the plan, when they expect that component of the plan or that task to be completed, and any supporting documentation. And then finally, once they have been working through that plan, what is the completion date for that particular task? Now, what's different this year is that we've also, because of the data with students with disabilities, we've included a specific essential action around students with disabilities that schools have to respond to and include tasks around addressing the data as it relates to children with disabilities. That is the one area, when we look at subgroup data in schools not being fully accredited, that is one area that has been an area of concern for us. This is the first time that it has been actually incorporated into each school's improvement plans, and they have to have strategies to address that particular area. And so you can see, I think you've been provided a sample plan, and this is, again, one of our schools. So you have the essential action around implementing and monitoring the literacy plan. Essential action two is about leadership. You've heard us mention quite a bit about each school's instructional leadership team and that work that's happening with our lead turnaround partner, Focus Schools. And so this second essential action is about building the capacity of each school's instructional leadership team to give teachers a voice and the leaders a voice around the work that needs to happen in their school. In the plan that you have, you can also see the essential action number three is about alignment of the planning that takes place, the instruction. You see? That's it.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. I wasn't trying to interrupt. I just wasn't seeing the other essential action.
I almost have up to essential action one.
Looking at the second sheet.
Right. Yes.
So yes. It's that document, Lauren. Yes. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. So the second essential action is around developing the each school's leadership team to build the capacity of that team to really look at the data and to work with administrators around building capacity of the teachers and improving the performance of students. And it may not just be an instructional matter or academic. It could be around attendance or behavior or any other areas of concern or areas of need based on the school's data. And so that instructional leadership team is composed of teachers. Some actually have a parent liaison as a member of the team. The principal and assistant principal are also members, but they are not the facilitators. They are there to be a member, and the teams are led by teacher leaders in the building. And they attend the monthly meetings with us in Focus Schools to continue to move the work forward. The third essential action is around, again, written, taught, and tested, and what that simply means is that there's an alignment of content and depth of knowledge or rigor with the planning that takes place, the instruction, and any assessments that students are given, such that we're not teaching, planning at one level, teaching at another level, and then assessing at a different level. There should be a continuous alignment across the board. And so these are the strategies that this particular school is noted, that they will do to make sure that there's an alignment with those three key pieces. And then finally, the fourth essential action is on how we're using our fiscal, human and fiscal resources. And so we know that schools have access to different funding sources, whether it's a Title I school, they still have safety net monies, it could be the local funds, but how are they using that fund, those funds strategically to address the concerns or the areas of improvement in this particular plan? So these plans are developed. Principals typically do look at their plans, review at the end of the school year. They do planning over the summer, but when the teachers come back as part of the instructional leadership team at the beginning of the school year, they then sit to really draft out what the plan is going to be for this year. They review the plans. They're required to review them quarterly with their entire staff. We review them with the plans, we being the executive directors, as they're being drafted. Once they're drafted, we meet with them one-on-one to review their plans and offer feedback. And then after that, they will, in some cases, you'll even see in some doc, in some plans where they're, you can see it's a working document. The original plan may be in black font. They'll update in a different color, and then when we meet again, there's another color to show the updates over time, and it truly is a working document and not something that's placed on shelves. And so, you know, we've really worked closely with schools, and we've really tried to make sure that the plans are aligned to the needs of that school's principals and teachers are beginning to see that it really does drive the work of the school and not just something for sake of having submitted something to us.
And so you have it, the school board goals are at the very top. Then, at the district level, with our theory of action as an overarching piece, it gets more specific, detail-oriented, and then even more so at the school level. And so that's how that flows.
The Department of Education, VDOE, they also will request periodically the plans of different schools as they're reviewing and working with us. And so schools upload their plans into what we call an administrator's briefcase, and that we have access, the schools have access, and we can also give VDOE restricted access to just this particular component of that briefcase so that they can go in periodically to check and monitor if necessary.
So this is the background information, and don't know. We certainly stand ready to answer any questions that the board may have or discussion around the Accountability Plan and how it's linked from the school board's Accountability Plan to what happens in the building level.
So with the companion piece that goes with the Accountability Plan, can you just briefly, I know we went over this in Charlottesville, but can you briefly go over that one more time, just for the benefit of everyone, and show us how you have your targets and your benchmarks?
Right. And so that would be the data dashboard report?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, yes. And so, once the plan was created in working with the previous school board and previous chairman, Rodney Jordan, we then looked at what KPIs would be associated with each of the measures. And so we decided to list the ones that would be most appropriate to present either in chart or graphical illustration, and we put it into this chart form. So you have the goal or SOLs, and I think we had decided that we wanted to look at it by subgroups and to look at achievement gaps, and then other information there such as advanced performance and information for focus and priority schools. The other heading that says dashboard, we have included the number that's associated with it within the plan. So the very first number you see is 1.1. So when you look in the plan, it's one. The school board priority goal is improved student achievement, and it's related to SOLs. And so then you see in the plan what the board level, the identified needs, the board level indicator, the strategies, professional development, and implementation monitoring. Now, the piece that we did leave off is putting the benchmark here as well as in the dashboard report. So in the dashboard report, we indicated whether that was presented to the board, either by report or presentation. We've also indicated usually the date, that that data is usually available to us and then the responsible department. So once you get past all of that, because it's relatively the same, you'll get to the first page that looks like this in the data dashboard report. Everybody there? Okay. And so what you have there, we separated it because we weren't sure exactly how you were going to, how the discussion was going to go today. So we put the historical data there as well as what the annual target was for that time period. And so you can see that we have the SOL English, we have all of the subgroups, including gifted and military. Okay? So we did that for all of the SOL areas. However, I would like to take you past that to where it says, "School Board Priority 1 and 2, Target C footnote." You know, that's just for easier illustration. That deals with the current piece.
Are you on the handout?
I'm on the data dashboard report. Yeah, keep, keep, keep page, keep flipping, I guess. This one, where it says, "Previous, Historical." And keep flipping. So I've gone on to current. So it'll say, "Target C footnote." I probably should have categorized it as current, I'm sorry.
Oh, Target C footnote?
Yes, at the top. Okay, on that particular sheet, as what we explained in the presentation, you have the SOL main content area broken out by the subgroups. We've given you the ESSA percent passing. We've also given you what the pass rate is using the combined rate. We've given a combined target for this school year. So for English overall, we set our target at 75 percent. So at the end of this year, when we calculate the results using the combined rate, we expect to be at 75 percent or higher.
ESSA one, is that the one that they give us, or do we decide that one ourselves?
That's the one that they give us. One of the reasons why we selected the combined rate, because that aligns with our schools. And so they have to meet or exceed the standards for accreditation while districts are not accredited. However, in trying to align it to show improvement, we elected to create a target for the combined rate.
So the combined target, does that reflect accreditation requirements that align with that?
Yes.
So if at the end of this year, we meet the combined target for the district?
Yes.
This is district level. Are these numbers under combined target, are they the same by school, or do they vary by school?
It may vary by school because our schools have to either meet or exceed the state benchmarks. And so we know that some of our schools are there. Some of them have different goals where they want to increase the number of or percent of students at pass advance, and so that would vary. But all, when we roll all of the data together to create the district number, it includes all of that. But however, their benchmarks are established as meeting or exceeding the state benchmarks. And so we do have some high-performing schools that have established their benchmarks to get 90 percent or higher in all of the content areas.
So for the achievement gap categories, are these, for example, students with disabilities, 49 percent, is that where we need to be at the end of this school year? In other words, it's that low because I assume that they're gradually phasing it in the way they did with the score, overall scores?
Okay. Yes, and that is what we have indicated would be reasonable for us to try to reach. Again, it would vary by school level because they also have that goal. The ESSA and state benchmarks for economically disadvantaged is still at, for English, 75 percent. That's the expectation. And certainly, if they show growth, then they'll get credit for that.
Dr. Boone?
And if I can also add, in the accreditation ratings, they also look at percentages where we reduce.
Yeah, you're right.
So while the target may be at 49 percent, if we reduce the number of students not making, meeting targets or not passing the SOLs, then we also get credit for that. So that's when you begin to get back into the growth piece. But, so it's the firm number obviously is the goal, that firm percentage, but they also take into consideration if we reduce failure rates or increase pass rates, that type of thing, throughout the process.
This is a document we already have. I'm recognizing it now.
Yes, you have that document. We have a little bit more tweaking to do to it before we post it as final.
I want to get to Mr. Clint, and then next, Ms. Basine. Okay, Ms. Basine.
We talked about looking at, with our students with disabilities, looking at specific disability categories in our Accountability Plan. Can you speak to how that will be incorporated, or if there, if you have suggestions or the administration has suggestions of other ways that may be more meaningful at the board level? And some, for instance, we talked about, you know, cognitively impaired and those who are not, you know, looking at it that way, if that's more meaningful to us.
Right. I think that, and I apologize because we are supposed to get that report to you. I believe there's 13 categories of students with disabilities, and so we can provide that for you to take a look. I think that the, in looking, because the numbers can get very small, we would probably look at the top areas that have the largest number of students, and then perhaps we'll have to look to see what would be reasonable there, because that will fluctuate based on students who are identified.
I was just curious if other districts are talking about that specifically, because, I mean, you know, as a state, we're not performing well at all for students with disabilities as a state. You know, we're certainly not the only district with low performance in that subgroup, so I just wonder if there's, you know, greater conversation around that.
There may be. We would have to talk with Dr. James Mitchell to see if she's hearing anything. Dr. Boone?
Well, and I was going to add with, even as superintendent, as we've talked about this, the conversation even from VDOE tends to be in the aggregate
Yeah.
of students with disabilities. So I would venture to say that we're probably one of the leading districts in terms of us looking at it by the major disability categories. And when Dr. Bailey mentioned, you know, the 13, 14 disability categories, sometimes the categories such as speech-language impairment could be something as simple as articulation disorders and doesn't impact their ability to learn. So I certainly agree with Dr. Bailey that it's probably most productive to look at those high needs or those areas that are the predominant, large areas of disability, as you started indicating, even though speech is always going to be a very large category. But the idea of their, the speech, if it's articulation versus language, and usually the impact is a lot different.
Ms. Gibson?
This is very helpful. I really appreciate it. As I look at the dashboard and then I look at the School Improvement Plan, how are those two linked? In other words, if, as a principal, I'm doing a school improvement plan and I have my targets, would I not have them as part of my school improvement plan here so that I'm doing all of, you know, I'm doing all of this stuff, all these great strategies and all, how do I know they work? You know, how am I held accountable for what I did? You know, we can list these things, all of which are all great strategies, but are they being implemented correctly? Are they being implemented in a way that's effective to increase? Our whole function is to educate our children, and we judge how well we educate them by how well they're achieving. So what I'm looking for is like a common link that runs through, this is the data. What's our, what do we want to do with it? What do we want it to look like at the end of this year and in three years and in five years? And so what are the targets or the goals that we're setting and that we've developed strategies for? How do we know that we're online to make those if we don't include them as a principal? If I'm saying, well, I want to If we don't include them as a principle, if I'm saying, well, I want to see my reading scores increase by five points. I want to get from seventy to seventy-five, so I can get accredited. Then isn't that why we progress monitor? So how, is, as we move forward in this, I'm not saying go back and do things. I'm saying, as we move forward as a new board to plan, what would be your recommendations on how we can get that link from here we are, to where we want to be, by progress monitoring what we're doing along the way to see if what we're doing is getting us the bang for the buck of the results? And I'm open for your suggestions on what you think. I mean, we've done this in the past, but it's a new day. It may not work again what we did in the past. So what, how are we going to link it all together? We have the, the school board accountability plan that doesn't look at that. We have the school improvement plans that don't look at targets. And yet we have all the data right here on the dashboard.
And the schools are actually looking at targets. Each school has a specific, what we call a smart ego. And so it's down also specific to students, that they have smart egos for students. When principals develop as part of their, as part of the evaluation system, they have targets that they're expected, that they're looking to reach by the end of the school year. So what you also don't have here is like even a professional development plan that's developed around, where I may mention a, a professional development plan in the plan. There's a separate professional development plan that leads to getting us to that, or getting them to that point. So our mid-year checks, or our checks along the way would be as data is released, whether it's STAR or benchmark data, or common formative assessment data, that's what you use to determine whether or not we're meeting, or they're meeting the goal that they have set for the year. And I'm assuming that could be something similar to targets that you're asking for by way of the board's accountability plan. But the schools do have targets that they set along the way each year and monitor those.
Wouldn't it be helpful to have those in the school improvement plan?
It could be, but we didn't want to make it too cumbersome. That's why you also see very limited number of strategies in the plan itself. Because we did not want them to just do a, a brain dump of here, all the things that we're going to do. We tell them to be very specific and strategic about what they're going to focus on this year. So those high-impact strategies, is what their access focus on. We give them no more than two or three strategies to include in their plan.
And I agree with that, I, I do, because I only had three at my own school. Because you got to focus on those. But what I'm saying is, at the end of the year, did all the stuff I do work or not? Did I make that seventy-five in reading that I was shooting for? And that seems like that should be something that's up front for us to be looking at. Did we make it?
Okay, so I have a follow-up question on that, but I'm going to go ahead on to Ms. Smith. And then I'll follow up on that, and then we'll go down the line. Ms. Smith?
Similar to Ms. Campson, just looking at this, it's hard for me to visualize measurable outputs of what we want to accomplish, other than the percentage.
This one or that one?
Yeah. And, and some type of measurable output would work.
If, if I may add, the, the follow-up question was, so we have the, the data on the dashboard. And then if you dial it back to the school level at the school improvement plan, as you stated, we have some schools that are meeting and exceeding the benchmarks, and we have other schools that are not. And if you look at a five-year plan, what is their plan in order to get to that point? And you, you've got to have targets, like if you're going to run a marathon, you know, how many miles am I going to run each day in order to get to that goal? So where are those numbers in this plan? So that we can go back and say, mm, we didn't hit it, or yes, we did. And that strategy that we were working on was successful.
It's in the school board plan. When you look at the targets on, on the TIL sheet, the, the targets are there for the school board's accountability plan. You know, again, it's the data dashboard page. The targets are there each year for, for what would be happening. And so the idea is that each school has theirs. And I, I think sometimes probably there's a gap between what the schools are working on and the school board's full accountability plan. Because the, the school board's plan obviously takes in consideration what's happening with individual schools. But you're looking at data for the entire district, disaggregated for the entire district. And so that's why what's in this, and what's up on the screen, represents what those, what the annual targets are. So for example, the English is seventy-five percent overall. Is, is, again, as Dr. Bailey indicated, districts aren't, don't fall under accreditation. Individual schools do, but we've adopted that methodology to think about the district's accountability plan. And so we're looking to grow at least two percent annually in terms of from where we are to where we would want to be. There's information in the footnotes that also, you know, description, in a narrative description there about those footnotes. So I, I agree. I understand where that gap exists between the school board having the targets and what individual schools have. And so we, we provided the, and a sample of a school improvement plan to do that. And so what you don't see is what the principals and the executive directors and the school instructional leadership teams are working with on a daily basis. Because they are using their data to drive the, the decisions and the actions that they make. And just one other comment, too, as it relates to when the district had an accountability system previously, we learned very clearly that less is more. And I think schools were limited to about seven total strategies, indicators over, over the three big areas within the accountability system.
But I'm still not understand, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need to speak out without raising my hand.
Christine, did you feel, are you comfortable with the question? Okay, let me get to a couple of other folks, and then we'll come back. Ms. Basine?
Dr. Boone shared what I was going to share.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a good conversation. From, from my perspective, we are, we're almost having the conversation today. They kind of led the board and administration to look at doing the school board accountability plan to begin with. We were really just trying to focus on the, the role of the school board in student achievement and outcomes. And we knew we didn't have the, you know, at that time, you know, we've, I've heard many times already what the past school board did. But actually, this activity and the whole strategic plan has probably gone through three or four different compositions of the school board and two or three superintendents, full-time or, or acting. And what we were trying to do was take, what was occurring was, we were finding that the work that was happening with the state around school improvement and essential actions, and IndySTAR, and all of that, was dominating school board discussion. And so what we were trying to do, we were trying to elevate the, the accountability up to the school board level of what are the things that the school board could do, monitor, measure, to try to ensure that we were actually achieving the, the outcomes that Mrs. Campson mentioned, Ms. Campson mentioned. So Dr. G, you may recall, we had school improvement plans, we had codes to IndySTAR, we had master milestones, we had strategic plan. We had all this stuff. And what we agreed to do collectively was try to streamline the work that was being done in the strategic plan. So we used to have a strategic plan that was about three volumes long. And we reduced it, and we focused on the, the high-level piece. And then we took the accountability plan. So in the accountability plan, the theory is, is that if you have a school that has a school improvement plan, at least as it was defined then around what VDOE was doing, in theory, if a school designed and implemented with fidelity their school improvement plan, you would see, we would see outcomes at the individual student level, at the school level, and other indicators that we have in the school board accountability plan, we would see those indicators being met and exceeded. And as a board, we would then know whether or not we were having success, or whether it was, whatever the strategy was. We would be able to have discussions around whether or not we wanted to adjust what we were looking at or doing as a board level, so that our work was tying to the, the implementation work that was happening with the administration. And so as, I think we really started to give it attention in 2015, Ms. Basine Wagner came on board, we started working on it in depth. And as Dr. Boone was transitioning in, we shared it with her. And we asked her if she would give a review of the accountability plan and how it could align with what eventually evolved as, as the, you know, her MPS theory of action. So really, if you, if you look at the, the school board accountability plan, it's not intended, at least it wasn't at that time, to go down all the way to the depth of the school level. Because at that time, we didn't have resources or time to do a comprehensive accountability system like we had some years ago. We were just trying to marry and match all these different things that we had out there, and prioritize them, and have a way as a school board, we could track and measure our success. So I think having the school improvement plan might be a little confusing in terms of the relationship to the school board accountability plan as we originally intended. However, as I said earlier, the idea was, is that if a school had a school improvement plan that was mandated by the state, that was directed by the administration, that was created on their own at the building level, ultimately, the work that the principals and the teachers and others are doing at the school level should show itself in the measures and the key performance indicators that we have, whether it's SOL performance, or SATs, or, you know, career readiness. So the school board accountability plan was really meant to be at this level. And it was not intended to be down at the school building level, where we were trying to, on a monthly basis or quarterly basis, measure what the school was doing. But we were trying to, well, I shouldn't say measure what the school was doing, but monitor what the school was doing day to day. But trying to ensure that what the school was doing was resulting in the outcomes that the board had set in terms of goals and expectations for the division.
Right, I understand that.
No, I just, I just didn't know.
No, it, it, it was a good, it was a good overview. I think from what I have heard from a couple of board members is they want to see how that alignment is shown. How does it translate from the building level up to the school board's plan? Because those are some of the questions that we get, you know? We will be asked, you know, how is the division doing? A lot of people want to know, what is the plan for my school? And, you know, I agree, we have to keep ourselves on a division level. But at the same time, we should be familiar with, you know, the, the aspirations of what individual schools are trying to shoot for, and are they meeting them? Because it comes back down to budget and resource allocation, and, and how we make decisions. And so if we know that a certain school, based on their accountability plan, is going to have extra needs in order to get them to point X faster, those are the decisions that we have to understand. So going back down. Okay.
Well, taking that one step further, one of the things that I want to understand and really focus on are the schools that are not accredited. And I want to understand, you know, while we want all of our schools to continually improve, I just, these seem to be the ones that need the most attention. And so I want to better understand what resources they have, what, you know, what are, what's lacking, what's working, what's not working, you know, to really feel comfortable that, that I can understand. I mean, not that it's not being done, but I just need to understand that, because, and, and also, what is the timeframe for each of those schools? Because I imagine they have different timeframes, because they're each unique. So I want to, you know, next year, after SOs and we're going through all of that, the accreditation, I, I guess I want to be able, not look at them as a lumps, you know, oh, these are just the unaccredited ones. But to say, okay, so each one has a timeframe of this year, and this is how far they've come to reach that, and hopefully have exceeded, you know, and become accredited. But then also, on the other spectrum, we have, I just want to understand this also is that we have, when we look at the annual target percentages, we have these schools that have met the combined rates, or the, the basic level that, that the state and so forth has, have, have given us. So then, then all of a sudden, we're not expecting change, right? So I'm, I'm wondering, and I have since the beginning, why aren't we not shooting for a hundred percent? Why are we only shooting for, you know, seventy-three, seventy-five, seventy-two?
Could I, could I address that when, when you finish?
Okay. Do Dr. Boone first, and then we'll come over to that?
To, to your question, we use the accreditation model as what the targets are. So seventy-five percent, or, or in English, and seventy in the other content areas, is simply what the accreditation system and methodology includes. We aren't limiting ourselves to that seventy-five percent. But when you look at the district data, we've not gotten to that seventy-five percent yet across the board. So the idea is, you know, what's the frame that you put into an accountability plan? And the frame is then the accreditation, because that's one of the school board's overarching goals, to ensure that all schools are fully accredited. One of the nuances and differences between what the district had previously as it related to an accountability plan is that the district had a comprehensive accountability system. So every school, every department had an accountability plan that would somewhat align with what the school board has. But through No Child Left Behind and ESA, and that going away, what we brought back was the idea of a school improvement plan that gets at those questions that you're answering, asking, relative to what's, what are the resource needs? What are the things that are going on with schools that are not fully accredited? And then, you know, what are the changes we need to make? Because accreditation, I mean, they're saying some schools that have met accreditation may not have to look at certain benchmarks, but every couple of years, every three years. We still feel it's important to make sure no school slips backwards. And so ultimately, for any school that's not currently fully accredited, it's a one-year window. But the state is beginning to recognize, and that's why they factor in growth, that you don't turn around a school in one year that's, you know, that's been deeply mired in lack of success. And so with that, that's where you begin to see the growth pieces. And so what's happening with individual schools? And I think probably, you know, again, putting together what these improvement plans look like for board members, you know, in a package, like we did, you know, as you were transitioning, to see what these plans are looking like by schools. Because we've provided the by-school data for all, you know, for the board and for the public. But that's, that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish, is exactly what you're saying.
When you're looking at school improvement, and you have a lot of schools that aren't accredited, the first thing everyone wants to do is reach the accreditation benchmark. And that's why that's what everyone starts with, including the district, individual schools and the district. As schools start reaching those benchmarks, they do bump it up. So for example, in my school, once we got accredited, then we bumped it up. We just went and made seventy. That was the accreditation time then. Once we did that, then we started shooting for becoming a solid, you know, good-performing school. And so we bumped our own personal one, on our own improvement plan, our accountability plan, up to eighty. And then as we started making that, we were all, all the way up to ninety. We did not go past ninety, even though secretly, my goal was always a hundred, and we had many of our teach, individual teachers that were making it. We called them the moonshots. So that we kept moving it up, because we wanted to be at least ninety, because at ninety percent, you're considered a top-performing school. So in answer to your question, any school's going to keep doing that. Because accreditation is just like the floor that you stand on as you strive to become a top-performing school. So you're going to keep bumping it up. Which is why, back to the school improvement plan, that I'm not understanding why we don't have that information. Yes, we could go look on the dashboard and stuff, but why don't we have it in this, in a single document that says, these are the strategies we're using, this is where we want to be at the end of the year, based on these strategies? These are my three or four big threes, whatever you want to call them. And are they working? And so that's why I'd like to see it. Because school improvement involves building and instructional improvements, infrastructure in your district. And you align everything. So, and I, rather than from here, it usually goes, should go this way. Because the board sets the policy, this is what we want to do, these are some ways we want to see it happening. And then it does then filter down to the school. But it should be in the same format. So when you look at the, the, the plan, whatever you call it, that the board has, then it should go down to what the district level has, out of the superintendent's office, which then moves down into the individual schools. moves down into the individual schools, and it should be some kind of alignment that moves along with it, so you can see. And schools have different goals on how much they're going to reach, because if you're at fifty in reading, you're not gonna have the same amount of, you're not gonna have the same expectation for each year's growth as someone that's already at seventy-five or someone that's at ninety, because you don't have as far to go to get to top performing. So, you need to have bigger growth. If I'm at fifty, two percent's not gonna do it, because two percent's gonna take me ten years just to get accredited. So, I need to have a five percent goal or a ten percent, and then the district gives me the extra support. When I was getting my school accredited and I was at fifty-five in reading, I ask, I asked for two interventionists, full-time interventionists in reading for my building, and I've received that. I called the deputy superintendent and I said, I need help, this is what I need. And we put it all in and we, and we just dumped everything into it, and we had a huge jump. And we were able to exceed the goal that we had set for ourselves, because of all the extra support the district gave us to do it. And that's kind of what, how school improvement works. You set bigger ranges of improvement for the lowest schools, because they have to, they can't wait around, the clock's ticking, ticking, ticking on the lives of the children. They can't spend their whole elementary years or their whole school years in unaccredited schools, and you have to give them support. That's why Title I was created, was to finance extra support for those children, because if you walk in the door in third grade and you're reading on a first-grade level, and you make the average growth of a year, then you move to fourth grade, you're still two years behind. So, you need to make, you need to shoot for two years of growth for that child, and to do that, you gotta give them a lot of extra support. And that's what, when you're working on a school improvement model.
Clinton?
Yes, so, um, this has been a great discussion thus far. When we were, uh, I guess two weeks ago now, at the Council of Great City Schools, I had the opportunity of sitting in on one of the sessions. Um, and, and I think I mentioned to Dr. Boone, I think we were sitting at the table about the Metro Nashville Public Schools. Um, and so, they actually did a session on strategic plans, um, how to align it to your accountability. And, um, one of the things that I took away from it, that I was very impressed with, apparently it shared it with the council and that they deemed it as a great template. We have great information. I mean, I think all the information we need is there, it's just in various different places. And that's the other thing about it, from a board level, we need to be able to have it almost in a dashboard where we can see it, we can access it, we can make a quick determination as to where we are, and not actually have to look for it. And it also needs to be in a way that the public can be able to see, um, from our dashboard, what we're doing and where the district's going. Um, so, one of the things that I, and I brought back, and, uh, as I'm kind of looking at this, I'll share that down there with Dr. Boone. Um, and what I'm, the key performance indicators, baseline where we were, the performance measured timelines were there, real simple green, red arrows, it's still, you know, we're going up, we're meeting it or not. Um, something like that, if we could kind of move to, I think we have all of the pieces there, but if we could get it to one, um, place where there's just a simple dashboard. And then, um, what they did is that there was another document that had all of those school plans that connected to it, so if you wanted to look at English, you could look down and you could drill down. But the thing is, is that everybody's plan as to what Ms. Campson was saying, it followed the same template. It may not have been the same information, because it was more deemed at the local level, but if I was used to looking at this dashboard, I could look at the school and understand the same piece of information. I think we have it, but each one of these tables looks, looks different. Um, but if we could just kind of bring it together, I think it'll help us, um, get there. And then, and that's not, I mean, that may be something we work over the whole year. I mean, I know there's several things in the pipeline, but just ultimately, we're moving, um, towards that. Um, I think that would help. Um, one of the other questions that I had, and I hope that will come up later, and that's going back to what Ms. Martin stated about, um, was in regards to the, the state accreditation, um, the other, uh, dimensions that we have, categories, and then also with ESSA, particularly with those particular schools, um, that we deemed, when we had the, particularly on the state level, the level was level three, two and one, um, how we can kind of focus on those and be able to see those. Um, and even if there's a timeframe that we designate as kind of performance measure times that we kind of do a dive, we're able to look at or, um, to say, hey, this is where we're going. Because I keep stressing, for me, one of my challenges is that I call this year our bye year. I mean, we've, we've, you know, all of the schools in Virginia are all accredited. We've changed the plan, but we have accreditation with condition with certain schools. But my concern is, is that when June live first hits, um, that we, if we haven't taken the steps and we haven't identified things for those particular schools that are at risk, that we'd be, we'd be talking about a different story, um, when the state accreditation comes out and we don't have that safety, safety net. So, just making sure that, you know, if it's the chronic absentee, absenteeism and, you know, just, just making sure that all those things are there and that we're watching. And I, and I appreciate, um, when we had our conversation, um, and we had our two-by-twos, when we went back and did the color coding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, that was just a step in the right direction where we can kind of see, be transparent where we are and how we can kind of move the needle.
What you're describing, Mr. Clinton, is exactly what we were planning and, and in development for as it relates to the mid-year retreat with the board in January. Um, that's usually where we have taken some of these deeper dives in terms of what's going on. As it relates to, so, so hopefully, you know, through agenda planning, that that will be affirmed as to the direction in which we should be going, because that's what we're already planning for. Um, additionally, we're working very closely with VDOE for any of our schools that have not met the accreditation benchmark, and so, we have requirements in our work with them that, that's ongoing. And so, none of this is, is being left to chance. You, you know, we have reporting structures and all of that. Ms. Martin mentioned, um, you know, what are the resources and what's working? One of the activities that VDOE had us go through last year was asset mapping, to see what are the human and, and tangible resources that we have in each of those schools? Um, are they effective? Should we stop doing something? Should we add more of something else? And so, we took it a step further, the executive directors did, and used it with schools that, once again, weren't necessarily in harm's way in terms of being a challenged school and not meeting accreditation, but use that to help them think about what are the resources that we need and are we using them effectively, so that, again, we, we aren't pulling people in so many different directions that we don't ever see the progress that should happen.
Uh, I was going to, uh, I guess echo and affirm what Mr. Clinton was saying, because in reality, that's what we've been doing. The, uh, when we first started here, you know, you mentioned in the dashboard and the color coding, I guess, a, a few years ago, and kind of tying this to the later discussion around budget, uh, you know, the school division had all this, uh, infrastructure, technology infrastructure and reporting infrastructure, um, that did all those things. And what was occurring during some, uh, changeover or, uh, outdated of systems, they had to rebuild. So, one of the things the board did was, um, commit to providing some technology resources and some additional support to the office to build that. So, if you kind of watch it over time, what we're looking at in charts actually is to be, uh, fully implemented in the, in the dashboard and be able to do those things, uh, you know, that you described, actually have was, one of my board priorities is advancing, uh, you know, that work that the office needs in order to achieve that. But these KPIs and the, because I actually brought back the same chart from, uh, from the council, you know, back when North Public Schools had the infrastructure, North Public Schools was the one going around, the St. Paul's and everybody else, showing them how to do theirs.
You're right.
So, we're just trying to get back to having the, the budget and technology, infrastructure of, and the leadership that we have to reclaim our position and for the board to reclaim its work at that, at that level. So, I, I affirm what you, what you said.
Oh, can Karen and then Woody?
I, I just wanted to add also, you know, one of the pieces I think that's missing here, uh, and that we're still working on and, uh, we'll be meeting on Tuesday of next week, is the district leadership team's goals. And so, those goals might be more specific for you, not all the way down to an individual school level, but it would be more like, um, English grade three, uh, by the end of the school year, we would have increased five or six percentage points. And so, among our district leadership team, we have some goals that are like that. Um, some are also pointed more towards on-time graduation and what we're doing there, or chronic absenteeism. And so, we know that if students attend school, then hopefully, they're learning and achieving. And so, if we could focus on attendance, you know, and have action steps, which I think is something also you might be looking for as to what action steps are we doing to try to achieve that by the end of the school year? So, hopefully, in the future, we can share that with you.
So, Dr. Boone, um, I remember you, because my ears perked up the first time we were going, meeting about accreditation and going over, um, the data as it was coming out. And, um, so I think the combined, um, uh, asset mapping and the action plans, I think that would probably help me, and, um, and I appreciate you guys doing that. So, if those things, um, are accessible as we move forward, um, if I can see those, that'd be wonderful. And so, the, to, to, for, just so I can learn and actually see what you're, what you're referring to, so I'm looking for you to teach me. Thanks.
So, Dr. Boone, would something like this be, uh, what you all would be working on for the January retreat, as you had said a little bit earlier, something to come back to the board, um, with this combination, um, what Ms. Martin had just mentioned?
You, today's discussion has given us a lot of, lot of input and a lot of feedback that we can go back and make sure, one, that whatever we put together for January, that we're hopefully, and would be answering those questions that, that the board has raised. Absolutely, we want to spend some time in January talking about how we've developed goals, what those goals look like at the district level, as well as at the school level, and then the specific actions that are required, as well as those that we are taking beyond what the state may require as minimum, um, standards to be able to support those schools that have not met accreditation. One of the things that, um, in working with VDOE, that, that we've had a number of conversations about is, and Mr. Jordan mentioned in the star, it was not turning school improvement into just a set of, uh, where you submit all these data. And so, you heard Ms. Chavis say that VDOE can have access to, to our Dropbox with some information in it, to see what we're doing all along the way, so that it's not just pushing out of information, but just simply the act, the activity of collecting that information didn't do anything to drive student achievement. It's what you do with the data and are you collect, uh, collecting the correct data. So, the state has even moved away from, from some of those pieces. And so, we'd be glad to talk about what our approach is for the most challenged schools and look at it from the, the full theory of action, from the full accountability plan, what are we doing for teaching and learning? What are we doing for the system of supports around students, particularly when you look at students, uh, or schools that may have issues with high levels of suspension, as well as, uh, uh, chronic absenteeism? All of those factors that even beyond teaching and learning that impact what's going on. You recall from several, um, board sessions, uh, ago, when we had both, um, the English department and the math department really talk about what the focus, the strategic focus has, is for this year, how we're implementing the literacy plan, and that's aligned around the professional development, and what's that system of work that's going on. I shared with the board previously that one of the, uh, comments that we've heard with the opening of school this year is teachers who were very pleased and very appreciative of, um, the, the literacy model, the, the literacy pieces that we had provided, and they said that that was a very strong roadmap for them to use in their classrooms. And so, now, what we will do is continue to monitor the implementation of, of that literacy mapping, and how is it translating into results and do all of that. But absolutely, we will, we will bring for our, uh, retreat, mini-retreat in January, information around what we're doing, how we're doing, and what it looks like for our most challenged schools.
Uh, I'd like to follow up with a little question, Dr. Boone. Thank you for that clarification, that was very helpful. Um, when you're, when you, you and your senior, um, team, your senior staff are meeting, could you look at the possibility of starting to, um, use a format that's consistent from the school board all the way down, uh, so that we can track it that way? I think that what is what, uh, Mr. Clinton was also talking about with what he's saying with the research, so that we can, um, have something that's consistently easier for all of us to follow. And then also, um, no matter what we have on, on these plans, when June rolls around, the accountability piece is the accountability piece, and that's what our children do and, and their performance on the test scores. So, if there's a way we could start pushing that into the plans, you know, what, what kind of target, um, that each school has, um, and then what's the target for the district, which would be the same target we would have as a school board? Because no matter what we say about any of this, we have our citizens and our parents who, that's what they look at, and they hold this team right here, this government's team, totally accountable for that. So, this, whatever the school board puts down, in the end, our citizens make the decision about how they hold us accountable, and they're holding us accountable for those scores.
To, to your point about what Mr. Clinton was asking, that's, yes, we will work to make sure that there's a, a clear pathway from the school board's accountability system to, to each school level. Now, I can't say we're gonna have all that ready for January, because that gets to...
No, no.
Nope, nope. That gets to, um, a lot of what Mr. Jordan was saying, you know, what's the infrastructure? We purchase iDashboard to be able to begin to do some of that data management, if you will, to make it clear. And so, we'll, Mr. Hoodie works with coordinating, I think, a lot of the work around the iDashboard, so we'll have to go back to our planning teams there and, and have this conversation around how do we link and, and, you know, make it usable that way? We will still make sure that, again, VDOE signs off on what we do have as school improvement plan. So, while we want to have a, a stronger communication plan within the district and for the public, we will still work with what VDOE expects us to do also.
And if, if I may, in addition to what we have to submit to VDO, VDOE, they're actually working with us very closely in some of the things that may be required of some schools, some districts, such that our school improvement plan meets that requirement, because they're under, they will be reviewing those actually, uh, beginning next week, uh, based on those schools that are in a, another level of school improvement. And so, for a school that may be, um, a comprehensive, um, targeted school, they will then have a school improvement plan. There's a Title I plan that has to be submitted for spending purposes and what those resources are, that it will be, uh, identified in Title I plan. And then, there's also a, an application, school improvement grant application that goes to the state. So, that's one school with three separate documents and three separate, you know, not all separate requirements, but we're also working with them to align that such that what's in that school improvement plan is reflected in a Title I spending plan, and it's what the state is also reviewing. And as part of their school improvement, um, SIG funds, school improvement grant funds at the state will, um, provide them once the plans are approved.
And that would be a beginning of the infrastructure that we're hoping to put in place for instructional improvement then?
Well, it's not, I wouldn't say it would be the beginning, because we've been working on those things over time. Even last year, uh, the year prior to that, these are part of continuing to build the infrastructure, but it wouldn't be new, because they've been required over time.
Well, not, but I mean, it would be part of, it would become part of it as we look towards building an infrastructure for school improvement that would make it all aligned, everything.
It will align those, yes.
The language would be, whatever the language is, whether we call it something a goal or a target or a benchmark, whatever we're calling it, whatever we're calling it, we would all be calling it the same thing every place we look. So, I'm not like, well, what do you mean when you say target here, but you say goal here? The school board's saying goal, someone else is saying target. If we could unify the language and the labels that we put, and certainly, a good idea would be to align them with what the state's calling them also.
That's true. Thank you, Dr. Boone, because that was actually, um, in regards to the iDashboard, was a part of the follow-up question I had, which was, how does iDashboard fall into the overall picture? And so, if that's, I guess, the tool that we're using, I guess, are we, is there, I guess, is iDashboard a, a backend that we're putting in data, it's pulling that information and then being able to put it out? And I know we see the visual on the, on the site, but I guess we're also able to get reporting as well out of that? I mean, physical dashboard reporting it somewhere?
You can get reporting out of that, and, um, right now, we have it in a certain location, um, because we're still, you know, adding to it. But certainly, we're looking to, um, put that on the front with the appropriate splash page to invite users to use it. Um, and then, we're looking to see how, how do we enhance what we've, what we have and add on.
So, my follow-up with that one is the requirement that we're gonna have... So my follow-up with that one is the requirement that we're going to have from ESSA regarding the individual school report cards, come July 1, for the transparency portion there. Is iDashboard supposed to be our report card format, or is there something else that we're putting in place for individual schools to show the transparency? And I'm just an example of the average tenure experience of a teacher in the building, the pay, and it's all these transparency requirements that we're going to have. And that's why I wanted to see that we build that into our planning.
We discussed this very briefly in Charlottesville, but VDOE has historically, under No Child Left Behind, and as they've said, we'll do with ESSA, will design what those individual school report cards look like.
Okay.
We anticipate it's going to be, draw and look very similar, or at least have components of what's in the school quality profiles on the VDOE website for, for each school. But we anticipate that they're going to still help us with that, so that, again, to that point of uniformity, because they have to document to the federal government how it's been done, and so that a parent in one district say, well, I got this information in my child's district, but why didn't you get the same information? So usually, those are somewhat uniform.
Yeah, because from the Cube Conference, when I'm here, it was also about our funding, I mean, our spending, out of federal, state, and local, in each school, and how that's all being tagged in there. So we have to be totally transparent on that as well, and...
That's exactly what Ms. Chavis was saying about the various plans, and how, and to, what I was saying to Ms. Martin about the asset mapping, you know, what are the resources? What are the, the base resources? What are the add-on resources in terms of addressing needs? And then if we get additional money, how we leverage that based on what targets and what that looks like? So it all links that way.
Thanks.
Did you have a question?
I was just going to share the same, the same information, since we, we reviewed some of it briefly in Charlottesville.
Just went back to the dashboard, because that was just coming in when I left my school, so I'm not super familiar with it, and it'd be great to have some training sometime on that. But data warehouse, that used to have all of our data on it, and it had attendance, and I mean, everything you wanted was there. And I guess this is, you know, for you, is that a possibility to give us that kind of information on the iDashboard that we had on the data warehouse, which I think was done by our own IT department, wasn't it?
Yes, we, we developed that, and due to some transitioning and upgrading and whatnot, we, we lost that. So what we're looking at in, in working with the IT department, Student Information Systems area, is to redevelop that, but not lose everything that we had created.
Oh, right.
So...
So that's a goal you're headed toward?
Yes, that's a goal we're headed towards. Certainly, we would be looking for our current dashboard to be a layer on top of that, because when you're talking about crunching a lot of data within the internet and whatnot, it takes a lot of resources, so how do we streamline that? So you're not, you know, falling asleep while you're waiting for a report to come up. So we are, that is a goal for us in our, well, within the Accountability and Information Division, to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
So when we were working on the Board's Accountability Plan, you know, we pulled right from Quinn's Peak Performing Governance Team book, and one of the things that he references is, he said, "First is never ceases to amaze me how many governance team have confused success with compliance with state or federal regulations or standards. In most instances, state and federal standards are set too low to ensure that children have the knowledge they need to be successful competitors in the global economy, and few state or federal standards at the time of this publication even hint at what success means in a comprehensive way, nor what it means for the rest of the district functional areas of service, such as operations, human resources, et cetera." So we were trying to define those measures of success here. One of the things that I would ask, or request that we do is, because I know when we worked on this before, we probably spent six to eight months of going back and forth, staff, board, before we voted on it and could come to an agreement, that the board administration agreed on the measures. And, and I know we've talked a lot about the systems and the plans and so forth, I'd just like to get a sense, you know, where, where we are as the measures as they currently exist. You know, are they appropriate? Do they need to change? Are they the right things? Do we need to add some things? Do we need to delete some things? Because from a board perspective, that's what, we really have to make sure that we have some agreement on, so that we can help guide the, the rest of the division. And so to the extent that we can give, and I don't know if it's today or whenever, but, you know, what we were, have been doing, you know, each year, we would try to reaffirm, you know, the board goals as were in the strategic plan, we look at the accountability plan, say, do those still make sense to folks based upon current conditions and whatever the will of the board was at the time? And I think we need to make sure that this team also can say to ourselves, and to the administration, and to the district, yes, continue with these measures and metrics, or make some changes based upon what our expectation and vision is representative of the community. So I think that's important for us to do, because they'll go off and do all this stuff, and then we'll keep going back and forth if we don't ever say, this is it. For, whether it's for a year, six months, or however long, we have to be able to say, this, this is it.
Yeah, and I think that's what, I think that's what we're having this conversation for, is to understand, we've gotten the baseline data, we know what our, our scores are for this year, and it's not just about the scores, it's about all the other items that go into what that is. Because we know that the strategies that you all are implementing, it's not just to hit a target, it's really for lifelong learning. It's to make better readers, it's to make critical thinkers, it's to understand number sense, all of that, which will translate to far beyond just what they're going to do on a single day for a single test. But I need that comfort, and that's what I'm hearing from the other board members, is to understand from Dr. Boone, are these targets realistic targets for what we can do this year with this budget, with this staff? And then in planning for next year, I mean, I'm an aggressive person with certain things, so I can, I can say, no, I want to, you know, that's me personally, I want to get from here to here in this amount of time. But as Dr. Boone is the, the lead person for our division, she might say, no, 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 we, we can't do that, or we can do that for this school, but it's not going to happen for this school. And I think we, as a board, I know for me, I would like to understand how we can do that, not just at a division level, but for, at a school level as well.
So that's part of the conversation in January, but I refer you to this page again, where it talks about the targets and almost the methodology that we use in terms of what we're targeting. So we said, any particular subgroup that has, for example, passing percentage of below 60%, we're looking for at least four percentage points growth. So the 2% represented the aggregate. When you put all English together, we're looking to at least meet, as a district, the state's floor, the, the minimum pass rate for SOL accreditation. Now, again, as we said earlier, that's going to look different for each school. And no, a school who's at 50, as Ms. Campson said, 25% change in one year, I would be suspect of their data. I mean, truthfully, I would be. But that's when we begin to look historically, with the systems and the resources and the supports that are in place, what has been happening. And so then we look at the data to say, what's realistic? They might could get five, because last year, they grew five percentage points. And so we set a target with the goal of at least meeting that, but we, it's not a ceiling. It's the place where we want to be, and then what does it look like? If they go beyond that, that's a real celebration for them.
So we, I know the division spent a lot of time also putting together the equity report and the audit. So how does that piece also work into the individual school accountability plans? Because I can recall, one school in particular had, I'm going back to the different levels of the new accreditation method, and I'm thinking of the Reds. I know there's one school in particular that had many level threes, but their absenteeism was very low. And so when we go back and we look at that school in particular, how does the layer of equity, resources, and other items, how is that, how is that represented in their academic plan, and then coming up into our accountability plan? How does that come up to show the growth here for us?
If I can start, and then ask Ms. Chavis and Dr. Bailey to certainly add, we look at all this work through an equity lens. So earlier, we were talking about schools who had 90% pass rate or better. Doesn't mean they don't need some supports to be able to main that, maintain that, and to support every child that's in place. So that's the first thing. But we also look at what's necessary, or what's something that, as they just made some progress, and then we pull the, the system of support, or the resource, and then we could set them back. So an example, you know, when we have to balance class sizes for the September 30th average daily membership report, enrollment report, when we looked at some of our schools that were eligible to perhaps lose a, a teacher based on enrollments at a grade level, we talked about what their plan is, what are they doing, what are their needs? Sometimes these were schools that had, for the first time in several years, had a full grade level with licensed teachers, and what would that impact do? So we use that type of equity lens to decide whether or not we continue a resource, or whether or not we stay to, to the strict mathematical model. But we, and, and we don't. We, we look at that across the board and say, you know, what does a school need, and how do we get them there? Another example, when you talk about the equity and how we use that as a lens in this work, the, when we looked at high suspension rates, and we looked at schools, whether you looked at the issues around the climate survey, or the suspension reports, and we made a recommendation to the board to bring back behavioral teachers in those buildings, with the idea of supporting the developmental management plans for students, and supporting students' success. We didn't do that for every school. We did that for schools that had specific data that drove it. So that became an equity lens. So it wasn't like taking something, the way you weren't taking anything away from somebody, but we were giving schools exactly what they needed. The board has heard me say, one of the challenges that we have is when we increase the number of Title I schools, it may employing equity models a lot tougher, because if you do things that we had done across the board, then we, we're struggling with differentiating because of that comparability report that we have to do every year. The federal government says, if you have Title I funds, and they're something that everybody is getting, you can't count that as extra for that Title I school, because everybody gets it. So when we do an across-the-board implementation of a resource, we then limit our ability to say that that was something that that particular school needed, based on its data or its unique student population. But we look at it particularly, like you said, specifically through the equity lens. We say, what should it be? Now, what are we going to do when we look at what the school's needs are, what its population? And Ms. Chavis, you want to add anything?
The only couple of the things I would add would be, is, you know, the asset mapping is definitely another example of the equity lens, in that the schools take a look at the resources they have available to them, determine the effectiveness of that resource, whether it's a human resource, it could be, and most of the time it is, it could be software, it could be day treatments, or other organizations that are coming in to partner with the school. Is that support working? And if not, what do we need to do differently? So that's, that asset map covers all of that, for the schools that we've added, that the state did not require, but we felt needed to do that. The other would be, as we look at, the schools have safety net funds, and that's issued to them based on the data and the needs that we've identified for that school. So that's not a flat, across the board, everybody gets the same amount of money. It's based on the needs that they have, and giving them additional funds to be able to have a part-time teacher come in to support certain groups of students. It could be after-school program, you know, push-in programs during the school day. I've also included, when we look at schools that this board approved to have, and Dr. Boone worked to have incentives to hire teachers, that's based on the needs of those schools, that incentive was there to say, we, we know that we need to retain and hire and retain qualified teachers for our most challenged schools, and this was a way to do that. So we're actually monitoring those schools that have the, that were given the incentive, the schools that have the behavioral specialists, we are working and monitoring that support as well, to determine if it's effective. And so the equity lens, as Dr. Boone said, is applied on decisions that we make. If you look in the, back to their school improvement plans, essentially, actually, number four is about aligning those resources, and in that, they identify for us, what else do I need to do that? There's a team made up of DLT members, has a jazzy name called Toast, and that is made up of district leadership team members, different departments, and we actually go out to schools and sit and meet with the principal to say, how are things going in your building? What else do you need that we can support you to move that work forward? And that has been very, very successful. We've identified additional resources, outside resources, even from Dr. Burstong's office, to be able to help to support those schools. So it's based on what they need, and that feedback from the principals and their instructional leadership teams.
Also, when we adopted the equity policy, and then, I think it was last spring, we got the first edition of the School by School Equity Reports, then in many ways touched on what Mr. Clanton was mentioning earlier, because it showed funding by school, teacher retention, MOBles, a whole lot of things and so forth. So if you look at the, you know, the accountability plan, the board's accountability plan, when we were given a focus, for example, to attracting and retaining highly qualified and effective staff. So we said, we would review class, teacher allocations, reduce the number and percentage of teacher positions vacant on the first day, teacher retention rate, reduce the number and percentage of long-term substitutes, looking at pay and comp. So those were some identified needs that we had. We said, what we would do at the board level, as part of our monitoring, was just that. We would look at the outcomes from the equity report, and then we would use that to inform our decision-making, like if we were, wanted to prioritize, you know, our budget priorities based upon what we were seeing. All of that tied back to the accountability plan, so the equity policy and report and other things were kind of like tools or strategies that tied to the overall account, accountability plan.
So glad that you mentioned that aspect of the accountability plan, because I know that we've spent some time on the student achievement part, but as we look at one of the other areas in it, with attracting and retaining highly qualified and effective staff, did anybody have any comments or thoughts on this piece of it? Dr. Boone?
Just comment on it. As we've reported to the board monthly through our personnel docket, you know, we were able to show where our vacancy rate was way down at the beginning of the school year. So, so that's where we, we've come in, and we've been able to, to share that. We've also talked about where we are with the implementation of the pay and compensation study, and, and how we continue to, to grow. I just mentioned, you know, allocating classroom teachers, and the identified needs to reduce the percentage, number of percentage of positions vacant on the first day of schools. And so that went along with that vacancy rate and, and all of those pieces. So that's what we, you know, again, using this as a driver of what are we paying attention to? And then, you know, again, this was part of our thinking, when we needed to look at the difficult-to-staff school stipends, and we've committed to the board after the first payment, what the retention rate looks like for those teachers. You know, those will be paid the latter part of January, completion of the first semester. So after that, we'll, we'll provide the, the board with information on whether or not we've seen success with that, and then by July, what it looks like in the summer for the end of the school year.
Tony? Yeah. One of the things, it's already in here, but that, you know, I would like us to, to take a closer look at, is the teacher retention by years of experience, and we talked about that a little bit in reviewing our personnel docket, and really seeing if our strategies around the pay and comp, are we really targeting the right groups at the right times? You know, just to have, since that is a consistent pressure point for us as a, as a board, from our stakeholders, you know, whether it be our teachers themselves, or the community... from our stakeholders, you know, whether it be our teachers themselves or the community, I think it's good for everyone to have an understanding on that. So it's here, but it's something that we haven't looked at deeply yet. And so that's something that, you know, I want us to get a good handle on.
We can, we can have that as a discussion point in January as that's like right around the budget time.
I mean, at some point, but that's, you know.
It just kind of follows up.
And I think Ms. Smith had, I think at one point had talked about, you know, mid-year check-in on that and then, you know, end-of-year check-in. So at some point, you know, I think that should be a topic for future discussion. I don't know if it's January ninth, but it's, you know, some point.
Okay.
You know, my, as we're moving to whatever the reporting may be, with what we have here already, I think, if I may make a suggestion that might help us, is that I see key indicators, but if this is the report that we're coming from, like Dr. Boone had mentioned that we did the, about the, with the equity, but then also about the staffing, I think at the beginning of the school year. But if they're board-level indicators, if we, even if we just had another page that was added to this, just real simple, red, yellow, green, did we do it? That it's done so that?
That's.
Is it on here? Because I don't see it.
Well, so that's, if I can jump in, Dr. Bailey. So the dashboard, well, I have it on my computer, but so the dashboard that we had early on that had the 1.1, it shows you the date and then who's responsible and when we would receive that report, whether it be a report, whether it be a presentation, it's indicated in that. So you, the intent that when we originally went over the accountability plan, the intent was to have green, meaning it was completed, red, you know, that we haven't gotten to it yet. So it was meant to be color-coded just as, you know, you're describing so that we could, so at the board level, we can monitor, you know, what we haven't received. It would also help guide agenda planning so you would know, you know, next month, this is what we had said, you know, this is either a report or a presentation. And so it would help guide that process. So that is part of the accountability plan in that respect.
I don't know, maybe it's just a.
And it's on board docs. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I've got it here in my hand. I'm just.
Could we, I mean, could we just, whatever we have here, color it red, yellow, or green on that?
If I may, these are the indicators. This is the reporting structure. So the red, yellow, green would be somewhere linked to this. But if you look, for example, under goal one, improved student achievement, we included teacher retention as part of that. So we showed, and on this one, up in your head in your right hand a minute ago.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay. For example, monthly, we provide data on, you know, what's our teacher turnover? You know, every, in every personnel docket, the board receives what the, we call a determination report, not in terms of we've terminated, but people who've left. Okay? So that we get monthly. And then this year, we've committed to two additional reports because of the difficult-to-staff school piece. And so February and July, we will report on what happened with that stipend if we met success with that. And so I think there, and so here it says when the data will be available in the various months. The team and I certainly will look at this structure and see how we can do some flag up, flag down on some of this. It would probably be much easier to do it in an electronic format because it's not static.
Yeah, and then it kind of moves.
I just wanted to add real quickly, I think I sense what everyone is, might be challenged with. And so I think what, and we were working towards this, we just didn't get there, but adding the benchmark on this, this report.
That would help.
And color-code it accordingly. And so we may have to structure it a little differently where we lined everything up so that we could then do that. But, you know, certainly we could take that back.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm chair for Cam. It's just like when I'm looking here and I see what you're saying, Dr. Boone, goal one, and then I'm looking at SOLs, but then I look at dashboard, 1.1, is that one and then board priority one? It's just.
Right, we understand. We.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Message fully received. Not offended by the message.
No, and I'm not trying to put out, I'm just saying.
But I think, I think we're at a point now where, again, in the collective conversation, so two-by-two conversations are really good for in-depth conversations, but it's great when we have the whole board discussion because then we can take away from the various pieces and try to come back with a way in which all of this is packaged in a way that is user-friendly for the board and for the public. And so we're going to work on that. That is our true commitment.
Campson?
To throw another bomb in. So when I look at this, so as a principal, when I looked at my stuff and my data and everything, and then I had to do my budget for next year, all that was in it. In other words, all those, this is my, these are my problem areas, this is my good areas, this is what's working. And when I did my budget, and I know we're in the, in the middle of budget planning season now, and as a board, I feel like we should be, you know, sharing with Dr. Boone what our priorities are as she plans her budget. I know, I actually made my own sheet, which I did share with Dr. Gabriel, about what I would love to see included in the budget. Of course, I would love to see a lot more than there's money for. I do understand that, but it would be a point that to be able, for the board to say, these are our priorities. You know, my priority would be, every school has a full-time reading specialist paid through the general budget. Every elementary and middle school has a full-time math specialist through the general budget. Every Title I school, let's say, what is the new term with S? Comprehensive school has a full-time instructional specialist paid through the Title I budget. Every non-accredited school, and they're all Title I schools, has a, has a full-time reading interventionist and a full-time math interventionist paid with the Title I budget, because I know the Title I application will be being worked on soon for next year. Every K-8 school has two assistant principals, one for elementary and one for middle school so that they get a lot of attention. That's a big spread. I mean, those are just a few of the things, Dr. Boone, on my wish list. But I would like us as a board to come together with something that we could agree on so that Dr. Boone is not thinking, well, I wonder what the board wants because we didn't tell her. And then the budget comes to us, the full proposed budget comes to us, and then I'm saying, well, I don't understand why we didn't put this in there. And maybe Dr. Boone is saying, and I don't understand why you think that I'm a mind reader, you know, which would be perfectly legitimate for her to think. So as we look at all this and we look at all this data, that all has huge budget implications. And that's something I would like us as a board to think about. And maybe we could all be thinking about what our priorities are and write them down and bring them together so we could let her, because are you already starting the budget writing, aren't you?
We started the budget last year this time for next year.
Yes, see, that's what I said. We work on two years. That's what I'm saying. This is the budget that you're doing for 2020 now, and we, nineteen and twenty, we need to let her know what it is we want to emphasize.
But one of the ways in which, to use your term, we mind read, is the way in which we listen in the board meetings and the notes that we take. So when we're in budget sessions, very few times have we missed, not perfect, but we usually feel like we have captured some of the board's priorities, a great number of the board's priorities, simply by the way in which we take notes and what we hear as a consistent theme around the work. And so we work to build some of those in if they're aligned. And, you know, your list is not different from our list.
Oh, good, and someone wrote that down, right?
But writing it down and making it to the budget are two different dynamics. Because one of the things, and you used an example, you like all whatever schools to have the same thing. Well, that's when we get back to the asset mapping.
That's when I said.
That's one of those challenges.
The title.
Yeah, yeah, that what we have to pay attention to is not stamping a one-size-fits-all model, but asking ourselves the question, what supports does a school need to enhance its literacy? What supports does a school need to improve attendance? And we ask the questions that way and then look at what's the resource that we would want to put there rather than saying everybody gets the same thing because, as I said earlier around comparability and some other things. And we can do the same for all, but doesn't necessarily mean we meet the target. So we ask the question, what do you need to be able to tackle an area of persistent deficit?
So we're, as far as the accountability plan goes, are there any other thoughts, suggestions about the different pieces of it? You know, we have, we have, we have our board priorities and we have our, we have our goals. And certainly, we're in November now, and I know that we, we know that the division, and you, Dr. Bailey, you had said you all and your district leadership team are going to be meeting to talk about those, those goals. I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we want to have them for the board, but I think we're, we're working along in conjunction with what we have right now. And this is our opportunity to understand the baseline data, to look at where we want to be, and then to consider what those goals are going to be for, not necessarily next year, although I don't want us to lose track of that for next year. But is there anything immediate that you all want to make sure that is at the forefront of where our focus should be as it pertains to our plan? Ms. Messine and then Ms. Campson?
One thing, as far as just content of the accountability plan, that I do want to see included is increasing the percentage of third graders reading on grade level. And I do think that's an important piece, an important piece in terms of correlation with other academic indicators that we do have here. So we had the literacy, we had a placeholder there in this accountability plan, and if that needs further developing based on what you're, you know, finding, yeah. Because I know we've done a lot of great work around that, around that, and I know this piece hasn't been updated and reflected here. So I'd love to have your input on that. But one piece that I feel strongly about in the research supports, you know, is to monitor third grade, you know, monitoring reading on grade level throughout, but third grade in particular, be something that.
I agree that that's a critical.
It would be my number one.
Yeah.
Especially since as we know, we have, our '04 zip code is what, number eight in the country for the number of minority males that are imprisoned by the age of thirty. In '04, we know what schools we have there. And that neighborhood, that zip code is, that huge study that was done where they looked at every zip code in the country and found the largest percentages of young males, young minority males who ended up in prison by the age of thirty. And we have one of those zip codes sitting right here in Norfolk. And so that's a big concern. That's always my concern. Third grade reading tells it all. That's where you put all your resources in the elementary school. I mean, you do everything. So I, I'm right, yay! You're my hero right now for bringing that up.
So do we have another, and I don't know, maybe I've missed it, but I, I know that I've seen on some state reports that have come out from some outside agencies, particularly with our gaps between African-American males and their white counterparts. Do we have anything that's focused in our plan that focuses on closing those gaps or that we're focusing?
Those are here.
There's in there, okay. So I just wanted to see how we elevate, because I almost feel like if we, going back to what Ms. Campson was talking about with the '04, that if we put some, you know, identifying what those resources are and really targeting that gap and that population, I think that it hits a lot of different things. I mean, that's what, one of the things I took back from the council rates at the schools, it was like not trying to hit everything because then you just, you know, you really defeat yourself and dilute it. But finding those cross-sections where they intersect with a lot of other different things, that if you target that area, then it kind of rises, you know, and raises the overall district. And I just feel like if we close that gap and we're able to target on some of those things at Norfolk Public Schools, it could really help us in overall raising our.
So as an example, when Ms. Messine talked about us looking at the predominant disability categories, that was one of those. Yes, we need to raise all disabilities, but who are the kids who may need the greatest level of support? Who are not close to the benchmark based on disability category? The other thing is when you look at the priorities, and we do have the various subgroups, we can, again, you know, we talked about, even when we did Voices from the Field and everything else when we were presenting, you know, you look at black, Hispanic, Asian, white, and then you're looking at gender within those. It's not identified here, but the idea is, again, is that what I'm, what I'm making note of is how do we show the gender performance within the various groups? So black, if you have males, females, Hispanic, males, females, then we can begin to see. Now, the dashboard will allow you to queue and pull up those things. So we have them. But as you were talking about, in some of the one-stop shopping you're there, but you can actually go into the dashboard and pull it up by the various student groups and see what it looks like and begin to drill down in that.
Right, and also, you know, that type of reporting information was a part of our data warehouse. And so that's what we hope to get back to. We can sort of, if you will, hardwire it so that we can take a look at how our data looks now. And so, but, and we should also take that back to the district leadership team too as a focus area.
Well, are you saying that you want to have a focus on closing the achievement gap at a quicker rate with the African-American males and the counterpart? Or are you saying just you want us to specifically just report out on it?
I don't think just report out on it. I mean, I think we just need to be really strategic and that needs to be at the forefront.
Monitoring.
And monitoring. And if that means that when we get to the budget discussion, that we need to talk about realigning resources to support those efforts, that we do.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, we have lots of questions. Okay, Lauren, Tanya, Adele?
In top-performing schools, they are tracking it. If you look at a top-performing school, they're tracking all of those things. They're tracking the things they're most concerned about, kids that are, that have been retained. They're tracking African-American males. They're tracking special needs students. They're tracking them on all their progress monitoring things. A top-performing school would have someone in the building that's in charge of tracking a particular subgroup. And that, and then that would be reported out every month in their leadership meeting, leadership team meetings by child because they're all the way at the bottom, so they're naming children. You know, what about, well, we're looking at where we're putting our interventions for the next month, what children are going here and there. Then that person can raise their hand and say, you know, what about Billy here? You know, I'm noticing that on his progress monitoring, he's never broken seventy. You know, he's not falling at fifty where we look at tier-three intervention services, but he's consistently not making the cut score or the benchmark of seventy. So we need to, even though he's not popping at the top, he needs to be here. There needs to be an advocate at your school for black males or for special needs children or for retainees or kids that didn't pass the SOL the year before. And that's how, because the truth is, the way you get accredited, the way you become a top-performing ninety percent-plus school is you close the achievement gaps. That's the whole secret to high performance is to close and eliminate those gaps. And that should be something that's a target for, for any school and to have people that are, that are responsible for it and tracking those kids through every single thing they do all year.
And, and just to expand on that, I would say that the way you become high performing is to touch every child. And by touching the child, you are, you're personalizing it to the child, not to the data set that the adults need.
Right, they're not numbers.
And so what we have is exactly what Ms. Campson has described. I know, Ms. Chaves, you want to talk about how that's playing out in all of our schools, not just our high-performing schools.
But as hell, they're going to become high-performing schools.
It is helping them, exactly. So when you look at, when we mentioned RTI, you may have been in schools in your visits and you've seen data posted and you've seen, I was in one school this week in particular, we were meeting and they had called their data room, some call it their situation room, some call it the war room, whatever they choose to call. But you see, on this particular school this week, they had posters up. It was each, there was a red, yellow, and a green poster, and there were stickies in the different subject area, and there were kids' names on those stickies. And those stickies represent, and the tears that those children are falling in to say, and in some schools, you'll see a board straight across where they've tracked kids from last year to this year to say, is this student still showing in tier two or tier three? What are we going to do differently? Because that child can't stay there. So what Mrs. Campson has described, as Dr. Boone mentioned, is when you're in schools, you you see data posted, and that's how they're tracking schools, so that children, so when they're in meetings, that data should be visible. And that's one thing that even with our lead focus school partners, they've been working with us to make sure that schools have those data situations set up, and they're actually meet, when they're meeting, they're looking at data, and they're pulling out student work to align with knowing that the work that's ingrading children and making sure that they're mastering the material and not just passing or barely getting there. But those, the data points in the RTI is what Ms. Campson just described.
I know, RTI is the way to go.
Ms. Messine and then Ms. Martin.
So, just real quick, so, you know, as we, you know, get to the goals and priorities, one of the things in every budget, every time we were in budget discussions, I asked the question about the data warehouse and our functionality of it. And I know it's a work in progress, but that is something that, you know, at this point, you know, when I came on the board in 2015, it was, we were using a new system. And now, I feel that, you know, are we where we hope to be at this point? What else do we need? Because we're still talking about the way it used to be and not where we know we need to be. And so, you know, as a, whether it's a goal, whether it's something that the board needs to monitor more closely so that we do provide the resources to help be able to, you know, do program review, be able to really assess where we are academically, you know, monitoring student performance. I think, I personally think I would like to see us really have that as a, as a goal for us and a priority, whatever we need to do to get us at that max level so that we can do that.
I think at, at our meeting next week with DLT, certainly IT will be there, along with Student Information Systems Manager, and talking about, okay, what's our goal for the data warehouse? You know, certainly IT has other infrastructure things that they are focused on, but for the data warehouse too, by the end of this school year, we need to have it up and running with some reports.
That's right. And then what do you need from us in order to make that happen? Ms. Martin?
At the last, at the Great City, Council of Great City Schools conference, which is very, I, I got a lot from it, and I know new, and I get really excited about what I'm learning. But one of the things that resonated with me, I believe Ms. Chavis was also, this is the session that she was also in, was the minority, or the, it was called Bridging the Gap. And one of the things that Orange County, Florida Public Schools has done is created a Minority Achievement Office and a Minority Achievement Officer, and they've implemented the acceleration lesson model where they're taking the children who are not learning on grade level, and instead of looking back, they're looking forward, and so they're pulling them out to give them a preview of the lesson plan for the next week, so that by the time that child is in the general, that lesson's being introduced to the general population, those children are, already have some basic understanding of, of what's going on. And they were saying that they could clo, they closed their achievement gap within ten, their, I guess, are we calling them subgroups? Achievement gaps within ten years. And had a lot of great things to say about it, that they gave the teachers the, so it says, I, I wrote down, accelerated instruction is customized by the teachers for their students. Teachers enjoy the academic freedom. Some teachers want this, others are nervous and need more structure to get started. At the end, the acceleration needs to improve, decrease gaps. Administration must use data to drive communication with teachers. Data should be from the current school and not compared elsewhere. So, it's very individual to the school, and the teachers and the principals are respond, you know, are held accountable to that. And so, I just really, they also said the students were really excited about it because they weren't being taken out of class for remediation, which made them feel negative, but they were being taken out because they were selected to get this preview, and it made them feel really special and added confidence to the process. And I don't know if I'm forgetting, if I'm leaving anything out, but I was very impressed with that.
I, I appreciate sharing that. Ms. Chavis had talked about that session that she was in. And one of the things I think that has some real applicability to, to those overage-for-grade classrooms that we initiated this year. You know, again, students who would have been in elementary school but a middle school age, and we have those two classrooms. And I think what you're sharing gives us a way of thinking about making sure we have as robust an instructional program in those classes to, to catch up and accelerate.
Well, I just, essentially, I had, I don't necessarily want to call it a goal, but when I was thinking about coming into this conversation, looking at this, that we have all these level threes, level twos, level ones. And I guess just basic was, everything that's level three, if I'm not mistaken, level three is really, I mean, it's at the, that we really want to move three to two, and everything that's two should be moved into one. And I guess that's just the simplistic way of kind of looking at that. And it, how we would introduce that into our accountability plan or what we're looking at, just, you know, I mean, if you understand what I'm saying, like, how do we just target it? Because we know if it's three, when it comes July one,
Right.
it's not a good thing. So, how are we targeting to accelerate to kind of get those to at least two?
You need to be careful that you're not labeling children as the tier-two child. It's, what it is, is that they qualify for tier-two intervention.
No, no, I'm not talking about the child. I'm talking about the school building level that we, how we do for the district level. I'm not talking about children at that point. I'm only talking about the building.
For an example, attendance could be one of those areas where a school, chronic absenteeism. And so, as Ms. Chavis and, and Dr. Bailey were sharing, schools that have any indicator that falls in red has to have a school improvement plan. So, they aren't being left to chance. It's not, you know, you could have a school that had all greens and one red. And so, they have to develop a plan with their executive directors and in concert with their instructional leadership team to address what's in red. And so, that's how we're doing that. The challenge becomes, again, this, this, the dichotomy between what's the district data that we're looking at, and what does it look school by school? Now, certainly, as we look at how we manage all these data points, we can certainly look at the red, yellow, green application to, as we did to the district data, and to say, you know, where do we look in chronic absenteeism as a district? Do we fall here? And that's how we begin to move, move those. But every school that has a, a indicator in red must have a school improvement plan to address that area.
As, as well as yellow.
Yellow too.
Yellow, yeah.
Yes, and so, we did resort the data, looking at the accountability categories to see how many ones we had by level. And just really, we took a first review of it to see, could we establish something to monitor there? And so, we're still at that review stage because, looking at the ones, twos, and threes, and how many schools we have at those levels, yes, ideally, we want threes to move to two and two to one. What's reasonable, you know, to establish a goal? And that's what, you know, we don't have enough data to, to determine that. Would you say we agree?
Yeah.
This is our first year with some of those data points.
Yeah, definitely, because I, if I'm not mistaken, one of the things we looked at with like the high school accreditation was the chronic, or, it's a chronic absenteeism. So, I think that there were three, potentially, three of our high schools that I think either had like a two or three, or there wasn't, wasn't a one.
Right.
So, when I, I look at that, and when we talk about, you know, sense of urgency type of thing, it's, it's looking at that for an example, pulling that out, that that one category that we've got X number of months before July one, what are we doing? And those are the type of things, I guess, from a board level to say, hey, you know, so when July one comes in here, I can say, you know, that, that the administration, that they were working, they were focusing on, trying to make sure that we address this issue so that we don't have three of our high schools all of a sudden, you know, based on the new standards, not accredited, or in credited condition, or whatever.
All right, well, we, we met today, we had a principals' meeting today. And one of the topics was chronic absenteeism and what leads up to that. Part of that discussion led to, how can we think innovatively, maybe along the lines of virtual school days, to help students with respect to that? So, we, we haven't totally flushed it out, but we talked about it today, and what kind of barriers are the schools experiencing? And trying to, to figure that out. Ms. Lance, Dr. Lance and her staff were there and gave them the first two months' data on chronic absenteeism, or, you know, those students who have been absent so many days and letters and so forth. So, it's interesting that you brought that up, but we talked about it today, and I think that they-
Or my mind-reading, I'm sorry.
Yeah, your mind-reading.
And the principals, they have that sense of urgency. I mean, they're, they're really are doing what they can, and we need to be there, as Dr. Bailey mentioned. Today was about what are the barriers that are in place that we need to be working with you on to eliminate or to at least reduce somehow, so that, such that it makes it easier for them to even track their attendance piece and keeping up with, and reaching out to parents for students who are chronically absent. So, that was one thing that we did today.
And part of that conversation around the chronic absenteeism, the school-level sense of urgency, but it's also one of our data points that we're looking at as a district leadership team. And so, part of the reason, the question, the focus question, and was, was with principals today, and Dr. Lance and her team had some data and some things to share as part of discussions because we're all having that conversation. You know, we've started looking at everything in terms of what are the policies that, what are the things that we do as a district that impact chronic absenteeism? That, that's the first thing. Then, you know, you start drilling down, and of course, suspensions count, and everything counts. And so, you know, everybody's sitting around, oh, we don't have a bad case of chickenpox or anything else this year, because all of those could do it. But you, you have to have some really deep numbers. But a smaller school, two or three kids can skew them. Larger school, two or three kids won't, won't hurt. And so, that's the way in which, because the district leadership team, like a school-based data team, we're the district data team, and so, that's one of the areas that we have pulled out that we, we feel that we need to help all schools to be able to address and to improve.
And those are just the type of things that I'm, sorry, I'm saying, you're coming in, but this is a follow-up that, you know, as we're, the administration's identifying those particular things, whether or not they're things that, you know, we are implementing this year, and then if we come back saying that we're going to need additional resources, or, you know, to do X, Y, and Z, or even a report out as to what's being successful and not being successful, would really help at a board level here, so that when we, you know, and, and very much to the point where you said, Dr. Boone, in looking at the policies that we have in place, the things that might be in the way, or hinder or are causing additional problems, that type of stuff being, coming to the board so that we can address them. And so, I appreciate hearing that you guys are having those conversations.
And so, one of the, a perfect example is the conversation about the restoration of in-school suspension. The, the board members know that I, for, ever since I've been here, I've been working to try to restore in-school suspension. That was a critical resource through difficult budget times that was eliminated. And so, we made some more headway in, in the current budget. But again, you know, that's something that, because we didn't have robust in-school suspensions, students were being suspended out of school for minor infractions because we just didn't have anything else. And so, that's one of those pieces where we're trying to bring back. That's something that we can help to support the issues around students. Like I said, the minor infraction, you know, you do something major, you, you have to be separated from the school for whatever period of time. But those are the types of things that we're really trying to focus on to see, and, and asking the principal voice in this, not just assuming that we know what their needs are, because they, they're very different by school.
So, to go back and also think about what else we could include in here or change?
I'm sorry, repeat that one more time.
Going back to the accountability, accountability plan and, and think about what else we might want to look at. The discussion earlier about the overage-for-grade, that's something that we've talked about, you know, in review of our data, academic data, and that's something that I do think that we should include in here and have as a identified need in decreasing the number of overage-for-grade students. Also, to see, I think that's important for how we also monitor what's happening with open campus. Do we need to expand seats there? Do we need to think about other options, other programs? I think, I think we need to more closely monitor that. I also think to include in here, and we've got, we've received this information in our reports, but is to also look at the dropout rate and include that in the accountability plan. Then going to the section on the facilities piece. There's a lot of old, redundant information there too, that has been completed. And so, I would suggest removing those pieces from there. So, you know, like Southside St. Larchmont, Ocean View, Camp Allen, obviously, we would keep, you know, as we continue to work on that. So, those are, those were just some additional suggestions.
Okay. Great, thanks. We're gonna, I'm gonna take two more questions, and then we're gonna wrap up the conversation. We're gonna talk about kind of like what we pulled from it, and then we're going to take a break and then transition on to the next part of our meeting. So, I'm gonna do two more questions. I'm gonna do Mr. Jordan, and then Ms. Campson, and then we're gonna wrap it up.
No, I was just gonna, my comment was gonna be, there's a lot of things in here. And I think we need to make sure we have a clear understanding of what's here and what's being implemented as a result of what's here before we make additional changes to it. You know, for example, I agree about the cleanup, the, what's here now, we did, you know, the board did. We didn't, the staff made sure we did it right, but we did not text the staff with doing a lot of this stuff. We did this as a collective board, and I just want to caution us that, you know, we always talk about what do we take off the plate, that we have some means by challenging this. The other thing is, maybe it's a repeat of the, of the first, is in some of our conversations, I think we have to be careful about where we define the ends and expectations as a board and where the administration has responsibilities for the means of implementing. Because I think if we get too, at least when we worked on the plan before, we tried not to drag the board too far below the line in trying to direct the implementation piece of it. You know, we, we would say, for example, dealing with the issue around students with color or the black-white achievement gap for that matter, the black-white opportunity gap, you know, we may set an end that says we want to see it reduced, addressed, whatever it is over a particular time period. I think we have to be very cautious that we don't get to the point where we are telling the administration, this is how we want it implemented. We need them to come back and tell us how they're going to implement it, and then we monitor how that's, how it's done and the outcomes that it achieves.
Sausage, not into the sausage-making.
Right, exactly.
A little bit of different point of view.
You have the principal experience, I have the parent experience, so.
I have kids too.
I know, I'm just saying, perspective, though.
I put on the front of mind measurable goals. In other words, you know, and I'm looking at, you know, increased student academic achievement, increase the number of schools fully accredited. I think that that's an appropriate thing for the school board to look at. And, and, but I can't tell it by looking at just a performance report. That doesn't hold me accountable. What's the accountability here? Because we are accountable. The superintendent and the board are who our citizens hold accountable for what happens with our schools. And so, we can't hold ourselves accountable if we're not looking, you know, a list of agendas for meetings isn't telling me how is that impacting the number of schools that are accredited? So, I mean, there's nothing wrong with, with your documentation there, but I think that there are not every single item on here, but your big items that you're, that are your goals, yes, the board should be setting some targets or whatever we're going to call them, once we standardize all of our labels. I think that this instrument, how can you call it an accountability plan if there's nothing in here that holds you accountable? And so, how, how we work it out? And so, how we work it out, a compromise or something. Certainly, if you're gonna call an accountability plan, you have to be held accountable. And you can't be accountable unless you can measure something. That's what results are about.
Okay, hold on, Ms. Martin.
Just real quick, that's what Dr. Bailey was saying earlier about adding the benchmark column, is that what you're talking about?
Right, I was just gonna, I was gonna say the same thing. But I think that would clear up, that would clear up a lot of the disconnect that's being felt because, you know, we have that which is the accountability plan, but I think if we have that column and add that, and then I think that will clear things up. And as to Dr., I mean, I was gonna say, Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan's point, you know, we had kind of taken whose responsibility is to clean it up. I'm happy to continue to be that person for this, to incorporate if we're all in agreement on the reading on, you know, the reading on grade level, any of the additions, if we're there at that point, to continue to incorporate that in here if that's agreeable or-
Need to restate what I heard outside of, I'm not talking about all the discussion, but in the last few minutes where the board has talked about things that they wanted to make sure we were paying attention to in the accountability plan.
Yeah, I think, I think a recap would be, would be good.
Have increasing the percentage of third graders reading on grade level, elevating the focus on the various gaps by race, socioeconomic status, added all of that. We talked about the very robust data warehouse and what are the resources needed. We also talked about the acceleration model from the Orange County schools, addressing indicators that are in red, making sure that those are captured through, based on the state's new accountability system, that those aren't left. Spending time or focusing on addressing overage for grade as an indicator within the plan, dropout rates, cleanup as it relates to facilities, et cetera, and making sure the measurable goals are clear and that there's accountability within the plan. Did I miss anything?
I just want, does everybody agree on those? Because those were what individual board members had suggested, but does everybody agree on those items?
Well, some, some of those items, I believe, are more implementation that would be carried out at the district level, such as the example from Orange County. So, I think the overarching pieces, I think we've, you know, I've captured those.
I think that's good, Dr. Boone. And I would also say just not to lose sight of what the beginning part of the conversation was.
About the communication plan and linking it all together so that it's one, we got it.
Yep. And then, and then drilling down to the schools that need-
From the school board through the district to the schools.
And the other, oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't done with-
And then, okay, give me just one second. And then the, the schools that, that are not accredited that need the extra focus.
Oh, part of that is, so I probably have three or four big areas, I think, in these big pieces. Part of it is what do we do with the plan and the linking and the communication of it, those are two big pieces. The planning for information that the board would like to have, be able to discuss at the upcoming retreat. Some of the longer-term work around the data warehouse, the I dashboard, how we link that to the communications piece. And then, what were these other places that we wanted to make sure flagged or included within the plan that are indicators for monitoring?
Okay. All right.
All right, go ahead.
Is it quick, quick point?
I think so.
Okay, real quick, and then we're gonna-
So, just one of the things, like, I think that I'm interested as we keep adjusting this is some, maybe some program evaluation, things like expanding the BYOD pilot, and this may be outdated, but, because I know it's being implemented, do we still want to expand that or not? So, I just would like more information on how that has been going. Also, we, the last board had approved the GPS in the buses, so none of that is in here, so those updates will need to be in here. And moving forward with our safety and security in our schools' conversation, you know, some of that will be reflected in here as well, so I don't want to forget that piece.
So, if I can, to the point about GPS, not everything that's an action that's included within the budget was shown in the accountability plan. The accountability plan is around those areas that we need, the board wants to leverage in terms of improving student academic achievement, safe, secure schools and all of that. The updates, as we relate to the things like the GPS and all of that, we certainly will continue to update the board around that and not pushing back on the safety task force. You know, we want to go on that, but I just want to remind the board, not everything that we're doing per the budget necessarily shows up in the accountability plan.
And I'll just say also that this is, this is a beginning conversation. And so, as we've taken a good in-depth look at this and if we come back to it at any point in time and you want to, you know, email, you know, Carlos and I and Dr. Boone and say, hey, I would like for you to consider this in the agenda as a future topic, or can we go back and revisit this? We can do that because I'm sure that after this conversation, there are gonna be other things that come up into your head and as we review these reports that you'll want to get more info on. And that's what we need to do, working up to January, to make sure that it is as comprehensive as possible.
Director, I know that Ms. Vissine offered to do this and I appreciate that, but I think that there's some items inside of here that administrators would know on it. So, if she's gonna do it, which is not a problem, who would be, who would be Dr. Bailey, working point of contact just to make sure-
Worked collaboratively on it before, but, you know, largely because it's a board document, yeah. Oh, that's okay.
It's not done in isolation.
No, 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 I'm not, I just want it for transparency for everybody who-
Right, the way I see it is, who's the board champion, if you will, for making sure that the accountability plan continues moving forward based on the board's desires and interests? And so, that's similar to what had been going on before, so they work very closely with Dr. Bailey and her team to be able to massage the thinking, vet the different pieces to make sure that what was included was there, so.
Right. But Ms. Camson, I know that in the beginning you had expressed a lot of interest in that realm as well, and so, would you want to work in tandem with her on this?
I'd be happy to. What I was going to suggest was, and I'm very happy to do that also, was that as she starts her cleanup, that she, you know, does cleanup and sends it to the rest of us for feedback, that we can keep giving her back and forth continuously so that, and then we bring it back to our next work session so that we can discuss it again, so that we make sure that everyone's having input into it. It's, you know, it's a live document that would be changing throughout the year anyway. If we're not doing it, we're certainly not asking her to, I mean, I appreciate the fact that she's offered to do it because I think it's a massive job and-
Rodney and I actually had taken on the lead to work with Dr. Bailey and Donna's to-
But on the other hand, I see things that, that I would like to see changed and as we've discussed tonight, everyone has things that they want to focus on and make changes on. So, I'm happy to work on it or I'm happy, as long as I'm getting, if we're getting continuous information and she's showing it to us regularly every week or something, I mean, really, to be honest, this is something that's that important because I'm really not sure how anything's happening in the district with the imprint of the school board without everything coming from this document. If, we're the overarching, but the overarching has to be there so the superintendent knows.
And I would venture to say, as we've, I think, described any number of times in the last two and a half hours, that we are using this as a roadmap. We have been, the report, reporting schemes and the reporting structures and reporting times have been aligned with this and, and we do that in addition to the compliance pieces that we have to address also.
I was just gonna throw the, sorry, throw the recommendation out there and add on, Mr. Cloud, if you, on that, is there anything that would preclude us from making this document electronic where we are able to offer our comments as we're cleaning up and we all can kind of jump into it and say, hey, you know, this is where we are? As we're going through that, I just don't know, is there anything that would preclude us from doing, able to do that as a working document? Or, you know, I don't know, experience from the past, I'm just, I'm asking that that might be something, because the thing is, is that I think things might get lost in translation going back and forth. And I think, just trying to find an easier way that people can-
No, I don't think there's anything.
Okay, so is that a possibility that we could do? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, one thing I want us to be mindful of too, just like we're having the discussion right now, that we're agreeing to, you know, we've agreed to some of the items that we've discussed here. So, the way we've done it before, which I think, you know, that way, I think would limit the confusion and around some of the items in there, is that, you know, we incorporate the feedback that we've received today and then at the next work session or next time, whether it's, you know, whenever you, you know, put it on the agenda for review, that we review it as a collective.
As an entire board.
Yeah, as an entire board. We have discussion and questions around it and then, you know, make changes as necessary. And that gives us time rather than emailing documents because then, you know, that's also how we might end up with people looking at the wrong draft and, you know, I think it just created, creates a lot of confusion. And then when you have too many hands making changes and edits to it, it might, we may not agree on, you know, whether it's a division level, which is where Karen and her team, I think that's where, because, you know, we've all been in that boat where we want, we kind of, you know, got in the weeds and, you know, she'd remind us, you know, that this is, we need to be up here at the board level. So, I think I recommend that we, we continue to work that way, that, you know, if, if you're comfortable, that we work together on incorporating what we talked about today, bring the document back for the next work session if that's something, if that timeframe is good, and then we collectively review it again. And if, if everyone's good with that particular draft, then, you know, that's our working draft. If there are more changes, we continue to work, work on it.
So, if we're gonna move in that direction, then can I just add that based on our conversation, I don't know if that was captured in there, that we put some definitions around some of the terms that are used in here? What defines a goal? What defines, you know, a board level indicator, strategy? Just putting some definition on it so we're all on the same page in terminology as we're starting to implement things.
The note that I have here is unified language and labels for clarity.
Great, thank you.
That's what I had here.
Okay. Start looking at having an alignment with all the documents as we move from the board to the district's leadership team. Am I calling you the right thing?
District, yes.
Thank you. Down, down into the schoolhouse, that it's all-
That's what I said. I got that.
Thank you. And that we have measurable, and that we have measurable goals, measurable goals.
Right.
If I'm accountable, I want to know what my goal is.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I really appreciate the work that has been done around this. Definitely, I know that there is a lot that has gone into bringing us to where we are today and the work that lies ahead. So, I appreciate the conversation and the input from everyone and I know that board members, it's taken, you have looked at the document and you've brought your input here, greatly appreciated. So, if there is further input, then, and we will, you know, discuss this as we continue on to agenda planning, how to, you know, streamline and roll out better communication with this, we will certainly do that with all of the suggestions that we've had here today. So, what we're going to do now is we are going to take a 10-minute break. So, we'll see everybody back here at 5:35 and then we're gonna roll into the policy discussion and then we'll end with the board discussion and close out our meeting at 6:30. Okay?
I'm gonna give everyone my copy of my suggestions for priorities for the budget. I put my name on it so it doesn't look like it belongs to the board, that it's just me and my opinions, just so you see where my thinking was and maybe it'll stimulate some, you know, you have some other ideas.
Let's go ahead and transition into the next part of our meeting.
Taste testing? Oh, I turned yours off too, sorry.
Okay, school board policy review, Dr. Boone.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gabriel. And I don't know if the policy committee is going to discuss the policies that, okay, so Ms. Vissine and Ms. Martin are going to discuss the policies that are before you.
So, before you, you have three, three policies before you. We could start with the anti-bullying policy. That one really came out of our efforts to be proactive on bullying. You'll see that we've used a model policy from the Virginia Department of Education, incorporating some language that we've also been proactive on in terms of our non-discrimination policy as well. So, if you, you can see, let me pull that back up. Those pieces incorporated here as well.
This is NPS independent policy.
This is, we currently do not have an anti-bullying policy. We do have harassment policies and other policies that address bullying, but not one specifically on bullying itself. And I hope everyone had a chance to review it. I don't know if there are any questions, objections to any piece of it. I'd like to open the floor for discussion on that.
Sorry if I missed it, but can you explain again to me how this, how this evolved?
So, this evolved from lots of discussion and feedback. You know, we, we started this discussion last year, actually, in our policy committee meeting, when Reverend Haywood was also serving on the policy committee with me. And the bullying piece was so embedded in other policies and not specific that we felt like that there was a broader need to have a policy specific to it, to address it. What does it entail defining it? And all of those areas that we commonly hear about. And after, you know, we've several conferences, you know, last year that both he and I had, so this conversation started before, had attended, you know, there was a recommendation to have a bullying policy. So, number one, the question for this board is, do we want to have a bullying policy specific? Because as I said earlier, right now, it's, you know, bullying is kind of embedded in other policies. So, that's the, the broader question is, do we want, as a board, do we want to have a bullying, an anti-bullying policy? And if we do, is this policy reflective of what we value, what we want to see in our division? As we work, I think, you know, we're all in agreement in being inclusive and ensuring the safety of every child. So, I, you know, those are two things. Do we want to have a bullying policy? Do we want, and is the content and language in this policy agreeable?
Okay, Ms. Martin.
I just want to add to that, that the biggest value that comes out of having this bullying policy is defining bullying because everyone has their own perception of what that may be, look like, feel like, but this actually lays those parameters for us and for our administrators.
I think that definitely to pull it out and to make it stand alone is important because over the years we've seen, at least in some of the student hearings that we've all been a part of, sometimes the beginning of where the disagreements start deals with this. But then as a result of the behaviors, what we've also learned is that there's a lot of documentation that goes with this on behalf of the administration. And so, if we do enact this policy, what I would like to hear back is from an administrative standpoint, how much resources are needed in order to document and get back with the parents and then close that loop? And then what are we learning from it? Are we making a difference in addressing bullying so that doesn't, it's not a repetitive process? And so, that would be something that I would want us to look at with this policy, but I think it's good to have it standalone. And I think the community, this is a big discussion also for, for community members and for parents as well.
Yeah, and I will add that, I'm sorry, Mr.-
No, go ahead.
You know, the administration has also been involved in the discussions and the reporting piece and Dr. Lance, correct me on any of this, but, you know, if, if this is the direction that the board wants to go in, they've started looking at the reporting piece and how that might need to be modified. and how that might need to be modified and what the implications of it are. So based on their feedback and recommendation, this is, uh, you know, the draft policy that, um, uh, that we've collaboratively agreed would be a good one.
Okay.
So based on the model policy that, that we've looked at.
Mr. Clanton?
Yeah, so I like it, um, in the respect, and I, and I appreciate what Ms. Martin stated, um, the defining of anti-bullying. However, I feel as though it slightly starts to get below policy into protocol, particularly when we get to the bully prevention, accountability, and intervention programming. And it starts getting into specifics as to who, what happens, who does what. That to me is more a protocol rather than policy, which is a high level. So that would be the only thing that, literally that paragraph all the way down gets below into the weeds, as far as I'm concerned. I think everything else above defines, lets us know what anti-bullying is, what we stance, and what the board takes. But I, I feel like that, that's still good, but I think it should really be on the other end, I mean, left up to the administration for actual implementation.
Okay, so you're talking about the paragraph, the Department of Student Support Services?
Yeah, almost, a little bit up before that too. Bullying prevention, accountability, intervention programming should be evidence-based, curricula, practices. Then it's got principals administration, they're designated to notify a parent and they report. That to me starts to getting into protocol rather than an actual policy.
Okay, so that could be something that we could incorporate in our regulations.
Yeah, regulations.
So we have the policies and the administration works on the regulations, which outlines exactly what you are describing.
Other than that, I mean, I think it's good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work with Mr. Cloud and the committee will go back and, and work on that.
Okay, Dr. Boone?
Uh, Ms. Vaseen captured exactly what I was going to say. I think what we're hearing is the policy statement and then the accompanying regulation would, would, I think, would get at your point.
I also agree with, um, pulling this out. And it makes me think of this in an extended, um, format. To what extent do we address bullying in the workforce? I know this one is specifically for students, but to what extent do we address that?
Ooh, that's a good question.
It's, it's a great question. And generally, I, I think we address it in terms of inappropriate, excuse me, inappropriate interactions between staff and others. We have had occasion where we've had to investigate that type of situation. Usually it falls more in the harassment policy than bullying itself.
Okay, right.
But, but I think that's a, a, a great question.
Right. And, and I found that, you know, reviewing, that we had stronger, uh, a stronger policy around the, with the harassment piece for our employees, um, more so than our students.
Okay.
So that's.
Great. So takeaways, is that, um, the policy committee is going to go back and work on, oh, sorry, Ms. Jordan, go ahead. And work back with, uh, Mr. Cloud and administration on developing the policy and the regs that go with it. Right, okay.
So if I may, so first of all, I agree with Mr. Clanton about the separation between the policy and the regulations. I do have a, I'm comfortable with the idea of the definition. I'm not real clear on what the policy is here. And then the, just from a process standpoint, uh, you know, I had pulled out the, uh, my memo when we first decided to form a policy committee. And really the, the, the process should be that we have this discussion first and then we would review, uh, refer to the policy committee, that the original intent wasn't that the policy committee would go and create policies and, uh, task staff and do all these things without the, the board first agreeing that this was something that we wanted to, uh, wanted to do. So I'd like for us at some point, just be able to talk about what our process is for, uh, the policy committee and how that process works. I don't think we've had that conversation, uh, as a board. But in particular, can you just clarify for me just a little bit more from a policy standpoint, in light of the, the regulations piece, I mean, what is the actual policy beyond just defining what our, what we believe bullying to be?
Well, I think that, that was the main intent of it. And I believe that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that we began this conversation, I think, with the previous board. So, um, so therefore the policy committee began to, to discuss it at that point. And of course, we had a series of other higher priority policies that needed, um, attention. So this is carried over. Um, and so we've re-engaged, uh, in looking at this policy. But the main purpose of it is to define it, because we do have, um, you know, defining mean versus bullying and then what, what do we do with that? Uh, what do we do with that information? How do we report it? And we've had what seems to be a trend with the reporting piece of it, um, which is something, you know, we'll incorporate in the regs and we'll, um, modify other policies that are related to this. But the main purpose is to, to define it. What are we talking about? Which is specified here very clearly about what we mean, and that is not indicated in other places. So that is the main purpose of, of this policy, uh, which again was carried, you know, carried over from the previous board.
Just, just a point of consideration then. I know in the description itself, um, so you, you start with the title of the policy regarding anti-bullying. And then you proceed, or the, the policy proceeds to describe the definition of bullying. If it's the goal and will of the board and even tying back to the accountability plan to, let's say, reduce the occurrences of bullying, whatever, then let the policy kind of say that's what it is. It's a, uh, anti-bullying policy, reduction in bullying, whatever it is. And then the policy spell out what we're trying to achieve. And then the regs, as Mr. Clanton described, would then say how, how we would go about doing it. That's just a suggestion.
And as, as both of you all were talking, I was looking at it and, and thinking about how some of our other policies are structured, particularly those around the Code of Student Conduct, may want to lead with the paragraph that says, Norfolk School Board is committed to instilling in students the finest values of humanity and civility that civilization knows. Bullying is unproductive. And then followed by what the, the definition that we do, kind of reorganize it so that the statement of what the board is seeking.
Yeah.
Civility and all of that. And, and then we could probably look at other policies like those in the Code of Student Conduct and whatever else, and whatever statement that the board, you know, seeks to ensure that students aren't victims of bullying, you know, whatever that general statement would be, and then go into the regulation of how we operationize.
Okay. Okay, that's a great, that's a great point.
Do we, with these type policies, do we have any with a, um, purpose to just, not just, but in addition to whatever the overall purpose is, but also to increase awareness?
Awareness is what we do within things like our suicide policy. That's an example of one that the, um, board adopted last year. And we actually had awareness and definitions and, and, um, promotional activities that the district would undertake to make sure the students were aware of that. So I think that's a very appropriate addition to.
This, to me, this one seems to be one that would fit in that category. Increasing student and teachers' awareness faculty, awareness of the definition, what it is, how to identify it, even though it's not occurring to you, you have a responsibility to, um, bring it to the attention of leadership, that, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Right. And that, that's actually in this, uh, touched on in this last paragraph and would be one of the how pieces. So we incorporate that in the regulations.
Like you said, and I think awareness, but the awareness could be part of the policy.
Right.
Goal is to educate.
Yes.
Students and the community about bullying, as well as to some, you know, the school board expressly does not endorse bullying occurring in schools. You know, poor lady, but you may see what I'm trying to say.
Um, I have in my notes that, um, Mr. Cloud will determine a designation for anti-bullying month. So we were, we had an awareness piece in there. Um, and, uh, you know, I agree that this goes in with the see something, say something, you know, but obviously y'all will figure out how that's done.
Well, okay, so we'll, we'll take this back to the committee and, um...
Can I? So back to, um, Mr. Jordan's point of how the policy committee functions, do we want to talk about that? Like where, I mean, is that, was that a question that we want to address?
I mean, what, I didn't, I wasn't trying to introduce it now, but I do think it's something we need to do. I, I feel, we just need to continue our conversation around committees and the role and how it was started. Uh, you know, Dr. Gabriel started the meeting off with a story, you know, Pastor Ma used to always tell the story about the, uh, you know, the ham that got cut off at both ends, because at one time, somebody had a pan. And so in order to fit the ham in the pan, they cut both ends off. And over time, nobody knew why. As it passed on by generation, they were cutting off both ends. And I think it's important for us to just take an opportunity to kind of just review, uh, that, that process so we're all on the same page.
Right. And, and, um, so, um, earlier today too, um, I had the same thought, you know, seeing, uh, Dr. Birdsong had made some recommendations and some other policies for our upcoming meeting. And that was one of the things I did want to make everyone aware of what those policies are, see if we're in agreement, and then move to the policy committee. And then I, you know, realizing your comment, uh, you know, just made me realize that I'm not sure that, uh, the full board has had the opportunity yet to talk about, you know, our committees in depth at this one in particular, about how, um, policy recommendations are made, that the policy committee... So I do think that, you know, it's a good time to, uh, talk about what the process is.
Well, you know, one of the things that we talked about in agenda planning recently was, um, a couple, um, of points of clarity that need to be brought up, not only just with the policy committee, but with how other committees function as well. And so I, I don't want us to, I think that's a good topic of discussion that we can have, um, but not for tonight. But as, but I do want you all to definitely discuss with the board what some of the upcoming, uh, policies are. Because when we were in agenda planning and when Dr. Birdsong was sharing with us that there's like a, a large, uh, uh, collection of policies that have to be reviewed, then we got into the discussion of, well, when can the board look at them ahead of time? And then the policy committee won't be meeting until the end of November and our meeting is on the 5th. Well, that only gives us a week to look at them. And we know that, you know, we, everyone is very busy and so a week may not be enough time. And so we need to go back to have that discussion. I don't think that now is the appropriate time to have the discussion, but it is noted. And I think that we can come back to it and we can solidify what, what is the clarifying, uh, items that Mr. Jordan, uh, alluded to that we need to have a better understanding with. So, Mr. Clanton, I see that, but you had something that you wanted to add to that?
No, you just, you said it.
Okay.
If you will, I'll just email you all the, the memo and the discussion that we had when we first started the committee and see if that's still relevant.
Okay, so, um, are we okay with moving on to the bullying? Okay. So the next policy we have is related to our tobacco-free policies that we began modifying and changing last year. There were two remaining policies and these were from recommendation, uh, from Y Street. And we have representatives here to hear our discussion too. So I just wanted to point it out. I also want to point out that this is a way that citizens can provide input on our policies and, um, I think is a great, great thing. So first we have policy KGB, which is public conduct on student property. And again, these policies were modified to reflect the language in the policies that we adopted previously. Um, you can see the, the red line version of, of these policies. Again, because Norfolk is going above and beyond what is required by the Virginia School Board Association, if adopted, these would also have the letter, letter designation, including a Z.
So I just want to say, part of this discussion and how we came up with this was really trying to stay ahead of the multiple uses of, um, distributing or, I guess, um, ingesting nicotine and how the students are doing that.
Right.
Right, and or fact.
You're very creative.
Yeah.
So, um, are there, are there any comments, questions, concerns about anything here?
So then what would happen is we would be voting on this policy at our formal session at the end of November.
Correct. If there are no objections, then, uh, this would be on our consent agenda at the end of the month. Okay? All right, so.
Hold on a second, Dr. Boone.
I just want to ask one question, and I, I don't know if Mr. Cloud can help. Do we, I, I see the cross-reference at the bottom. Is that, that covers the staff piece and that no other human resources policy that you think we need to link it to?
I think so. I, I have to look at, at the staff one again, but I think it mentions something, you know, a way, a possibility.
Okay. That's, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that the staff piece wasn't lost in the trans, translation and...
Right.
And, uh, because it says public comment on school property. Sometimes we think as staff that we aren't the public on the, you know, that's where we work. So I just wanted to make sure that it is cross-referenced.
Uh, well, it says, it says no one.
Right, right.
Also says all visitors.
But the title of the policy is public comment on school property. So sometimes when you work there, people don't see themselves as the public, they see them as part of the...
Yeah.
The organization. So I just, but, uh, Mr. Cloud answered. He said, we, he thinks it's cross-referenced, so I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, so you mean in the title. Okay, so then we have, um, again, policy K, KGC, use of tobacco and electronic cigarettes on school premises. Again, uh, similar, just aligning language, uh, across all of our, uh, policies. Are there any questions related to this one? No? Okay. All right, so then these will be put on the consent agenda for November 28.
Oh, can I just comment on, um, some of the discussion about signage and trying to stay ahead of signage? And we had an interesting conversation about how the standard sign for not smoking is a cigarette. And that, you know, again, goes back to what I said earlier about how we are really trying to stay ahead of, are we being, um, current on how we're communicating? And obviously, you know, it's being distributed, nicotine's being distributed in multiple ways, not just tobacco and the traditional cigarette. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, so there was a lot of discussion around signage that we can have another time.
Right. And, and Y Street does have a recommended, um, signage too, that does include, you know, the electronic cigarettes and other modes of ingesting, uh, nicotine and tobacco, so, um, yeah.
And because this is a conduct policy being amended during, possibly amended during the school year, we would also work to make sure that all parents and students are aware of it and that we also do, uh, the information for staff to make sure no one gets caught transition. We're used to, again, this is, this is not a sleight of hand, just simply, the code, once the Code of Student Conduct and the handbook are put out, um, sometimes when we have updates like this that'll occur to that, we want to make sure that the public is fully aware.
Okay, okay. Um, and...
Ms. Vaseen, if I, on that, on that point, uh, you know, part of what we had considered, uh, with certain policies, and I don't know if this falls in that, uh, area or not, but when we've, uh, looked at policies that may have broad impact on, uh, student population or the employees, we've considered whether or not we would have, uh, one or two readings of the policy and even consider allowing for, uh, public comment on the policy. I think this policy is a great policy. But to Dr. Boone's point, if it's going to, um, change behaviors and expectations that folks may not be aware of, and the next thing you know, somebody is called the local enforcement because somebody has, you know, violated this policy, it might be worth it for us to, rather than just putting on the consent agenda, have two readings.
Yeah.
Uh, so that folks have an opportunity to understand and hear what we're proposing and the potential impact and then, uh, vote on it, rather than just going straight to the consent agenda.
Boone, would this be something that Mr. Phillips would send out through HR and notify employees that there's going to be a, um, a policy enacted that will affect the conduct on school property or, uh, for employees? And then... And then as what Mr. Jordan is saying, we would have comment available at our board meeting through email? And then not vote on it at the November meeting, but then vote on it in December after there's been two iterations?
Yes, we would certainly put that information out to all employees. But I think too, it'd be wise for us to do the same for students because particularly, since this is our first foray into deepening the electronic cigarette piece, the vaping, all of those things that are going on. And so we would certainly put it out that the board is considering revisions to the policy to reflect that. So we could, we could do that in our web, on our website, social media, make sure that the principals have the information that they can communicate to parents. And then at, and then at the November 28th meeting, it's, it's their first reading. And, you know, doing the normal citizens' comment on agenda, non-agenda items, if people wanted to speak to it. And then second meeting, then it would be the whole.
Would be December, and then that would also time with, I guess what I call second semester, you know, when the folks come back in January.
And I would disagree in general, I'm always more comfortable with a first and a second reading, particularly when we're talking about policy. Because it does allow the general public, for people not to say, well, I wasn't aware of it. It gives you a little time to think about it, because you never know, there might be other things that come up that we hadn't thought about. And then it gives the board some time to come back, to re-group if they need to make any adjustments before you take final action on it.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. We actually, last year, when we were reviewing the initial set of tobacco-free policies, we did have a public hearing. So this language is, while it's in alignment with that, I am, I am open to, and agree that we should have as much, you know, public input, so.
Excuse me, the other thing it allows us to do is also have conversations with principals. To our earlier discussion about the accountability plan and chronic absenteeism, and we know suspension counts. You know, we aren't necessarily saying all of a sudden we go into this heavy-handed approach. You know, we want to be able to work with principals to talk about how you confiscated initially, you know, the, those conversations with students and everything else versus going immediately to suspension. So this will also give us a chance to have discussions with our principals.
I just wanted to add, and this is just a small point, but because this came from a community organization, we're not tied to that 90-day. Is it 90 days to be, that we have to approve it when it comes to VSBAs, the recommendations?
No, this isn't coming from.
Right, but because it's not, we're not tied to that timeline.
And, and the VSBAs, the policy service is all about recommendations, it's up to a board to take the amount of time that they.
Okay, I thought there was a limit.
They, they, they push things out about every 90 days, but it's up to a board to determine. And they, they suggest that as a, as a pacing guide, if you will, so that we don't get so far behind on revisions. And those that are referenced updates and those types of things, we push those through pretty quickly. But substantive ones like these, there's no timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
So to, to bring this back to where we need to take this next, I think it would be helpful if the policy committee could send out just an email to the board, just to say, this is what we're doing with this policy, the timeline. And then, and that would include whatever you all work out with administration as far as when it's going to be set out for public comment, the hearing, or, you know, not, not hearing, but just public comment, a first read and a second read, and the date as to when we want to have it on the docket for approval.
And I was just recommending that we just.
Well, I think it's a good recommendation, I mean, I, I do.
With the timeline, do it, do the first reading.
Yeah.
At that November business meeting and do the second in December.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, and I don't know that we need to send anything out. I think we're in agreement on that, right, that we could just do that?
So, so November, we are going to be accepting comment on the policy. So what I want them to make sure is that the, we're going to be putting the policies out there for the public and the work, staff to do. And then everyone needs to understand that at the December meeting, that's when this will be voted on.
Right, but we'll also do that second read at that December business meeting.
It'll be, it'll be a standalone item.
Right.
Standalone item, okay, yeah, we can do that. For both of these policies.
For both policies, right. And lastly, before we move on off of that, I just want to make everyone aware of policies that Ms. Martin and I and the policy committee are going to be reviewing. We recognize some inconsistency between the health education and physical education with the school wellness policy. So we're going, we're just working on making sure the language is aligned. That's kind of a, a quick, you know, not a big deal. But one of the other, the two other pieces that the administration suggested, you know, that we look at is the dress code policy as well as the homework policy. And so are there any objections?
Do we need, do we need a public hearing on dress code policy?
We, we may, yeah, I mean, if we're making substantial changes, yeah.
The only other item that I had brought up in discussion with regards to policy was from the public comment that we had had previously from the staff member who was a military teacher. She was, she was attached to a military, so you all are aware of my.
Right, yeah, and so, you know, going back to the process piece, you know, we're bringing, that's why I'm bringing the other policies up that the policy committee is reviewing as well as the one that you're recommending. And just to make sure the full board is aware of what that recommendation is, is everyone aware of that? To go back and look at HR policies related to the transfer of teachers, particularly military-connected spouses, so.
Sure, I understand the, the impassioned statement that the teacher made before the board. I do caution the board, we're beginning to potentially set, make exceptions or allowances for people based on a certain set of circumstances. If you look at the Virginia Form Contract, the employment is to the district, it is not for a particular school. Now, as part of the military compact, we, as a district, at the request and as the state has signed off on that compact, military families, do try to preserve space for students to enroll in the various programs or at least try out for the various programs and things. But I, I do caution you that if we get into a place that we're making exceptions in terms of placements and staffing, that you're going to open up a can of worms because everybody's going to have a good reason why they shouldn't have to switch their schools if enrollment doesn't materialize. So I offer that to the board and to the committee as something to consider.
And did you have, like, a draft policy or policies from other divisions that you wanted to share?
No, in fact, Mr. Phillips had said that they, that there were some policies in existence already that kind of addressed that, which was what Dr. Boone was saying. I was, you, you know, there's two parts to the conversation. There is, an individual came and spoke before the board and we're trying to understand, you know, what is the follow-up piece to that? And then the second part is, is there a policy implication that the board needs to consider? If we hear feedback from committee and from administration that, guys, this is not a good idea, this is not a best practice, then we take that into consideration. Or if they say, well, because we are a military community and a, you know, 50% of our staff is military, we need to take this into consideration. That would be what we need to gain as a board from that, so that's where I would like to see that discussion.
Well, so this kind of goes back to my process point again, because the po, policy is a function of the full board. And so to me, if the, like Ms. Bassin was mentioning, what'd you say, dress code and?
Homework.
Dress code and homework policy.
Right, so to me, if there's some recommendation from the administration or from a school board member around changing dress code or homework policy, to me, that would be something that would be shared with the board. We are recommending that the board consider X. And then the board, following discussion, may refer it back to the policy committee for, for action. You know, it, it kind of circumvents the board's responsibility in policy if they're going directly to the policy committee before the board has even kind of weighed in on it. Because right now, when you mentioned the two that you did, the dress code and.
We haven't done anything with it.
No, we're saying that we are going to, so we're letting you know.
My point is, is as a board member, I have no idea what's driving it. So I'm saying that if there's something around the dress code or the homework or any other policy that the, that somebody has brought in attention, just like we just mentioned a moment ago with the employee, the board having the benefit of hearing what that issue is, then allows the board, or upon recommendation of superintendent, to say, oh, well, there's, there's no issue, or for the board to say there is an issue and therefore the, the chair and the board is asking the policy committee to go and investigate it.
That's a good point.
I'm kind of like in the middle on that one, because I do believe, yes, you know, have a full discussion on it, you know, maybe bring it, but it doesn't preclude, the real action of the board is, you know, voting on enacting policy. So if a board member comes in and they have a particular item, and if we so say, you know, our protocol for the board is that you bring it to the board, you know, to kind of discuss and disclose what, what's driving it, I don't think it precludes a board member from saying, hey, I want to draft up something or I want to send something over to the, the policy committee. Which, again, goes back to our other conversation that we had, just to kind of really clarify protocol as to how we operate here. But I just want to be cautious and respect that every board member still has the ability to bring up, you know, issues or even to generate.
And I think he.
So just for clarity.
That's what I said, I'm kind of, I'm, so, you know, I mentioned out, you know, we were pulling from a, a policy development matrix and it had, you know, non-controversial routine operating policy, non-controversial reform policies, controversial operating policies and so on. So I wasn't suggesting that anybody would be able to, I mean, that's what we do. So we would encourage members to come forth with policies. I'm saying embedded in the committee's work is staff time. So if the board is asking the committee to go and investigate dress code, what's going to happen is, then staff members are going to go and work on dress code. So I'm saying the full board needs to be aware of it and kind of, kind of vet that a little bit before, any individual board member can send the committee down any path and then we find out staff time is being used on.
I would agree on that one, that piece.
Yeah, so we're on the same, same page, right? So. But with that, are there, I just, we just want to make you informed, we're meeting due to conferences and everything going on. November 30th is when the policy committee is meeting next. And we'll, those are the policies that we will be reviewing along with those that are coming from VSBAs, so.
Great, okay, terrific. Let's go ahead and move on to our budget discussion. And so to provide a framework for this, as a board, we have a small piece of the budget. And there is a process that is done in order to give feedback to Dr. Boone and team with regards to how we would like to have our budget up here. And that goes to items that we like in the budget, items that we want to change, or suggestions that we might have. What we have done, what I have discussed with Mr. Butts, who has very graciously done some reports, is to look at our budget July, August, and September. And those documents are uploaded under the board matters under today's meeting. Moving on, that same document every month will be uploaded under board matters, under our formal session. That way we can kind of keep an eye on what our budget is looking like and where spending is. It's not very much, but I still think that we should be keeping an eye on it. So, you know, we were discussing out in the hall how we were going to have this conversation and being that we are short on time right now. One of the things, Ms. Toh, if you wouldn't mind also elaborating, is where does the board's budget fit also into the grand budget? Because there is some, there's been some questions that have been brought up to say, is this a separate item that's funded separately from the city? Or is this an item that is within our budget? So if you, I know that wasn't an ask, but absolutely. But I just wanted to, that was something that had come to mind as we were moving into this discussion. So yes, Dr. Boone.
So, Ms. Toh, you know, is our budget director, and one of the things to your question, Dr. Gabriel, the school board's budget is a line item within the budget document. It is not funded separately, that you, the board in its final adopted budget that it sends to city council, that, that is also included. One of the comments that you made, Dr. Gabriel, when you said something about the formatting of the budget or things in and out, I just wanted to be clear that you weren't talking about format, because we are actually, and Ms. Toh can certainly talk about the standard that we use in our budget development. Again, that is a nationally, as a recognized standard in the industry. But I was, when you were asking about formatting different, I just wanted, while Ms. Toh is here, so we can also discuss what you think it was on that.
You need feedback by November the 9th?
No, no, I'm just saying, we, we use a.
GFOA standards to build our budget.
Right, we use a general finance and accounting standards. And so I wasn't sure if your statement was about how we present the budget to the board and how to. Okay, so when you say it formatted, that was, so that's perfect.
Sorry, okay. All right, really, we start the budget process last month, instructions were sent out to the departments, and they have until Friday to complete their budget. Certainly, because you guys are busy, we're willing to extend it.
Thank you.
Good time. All right, and then there's a public hearing on the budget on November the 28th.
And if I can, Pearl. That, the, the hearing on the budget is just to hear what people are thinking about the budget. There's, there's not a lot that we do in terms of any forecast, anything else, so.
I start budget meetings with the departments during the month of November and December. And then the governor will release his budget in December, state revenue is very important because that's part of our budget and that information is, I'm sorry, that information is critical. In January, I start compiling all the budget requests and present that to the DLT team. And then they will then prioritize the needs and make recommendations to Dr. Boone. In February, we will work to balance the budget because, to prepare for sharing the superintendent's budget to the board and the public. In March, there will be public hearings, as well as Dr. Boone will present her budget to the school board. State law requires that we submit the budget to city council by April 1st. The city will hold a public hearing on their budget in April, and then they will appropriate the funds for school operating budget in May, and that's the whole cycle. Oh, we will just continue to work to balance the budget.
So in, in terms of what Ms. Toh has described, with the exception of the school board's budget, because you all will vet what you want in and what you want out, and we just pretty much populate that based on your discussions. But what we've been doing as a district leadership team is talking about what are areas that, that we see as priorities and concerns and everything we have. The structure in Virginia and, and most states is that it's the superintendent's proposed budget to the board. So all this going on in February is where, from now until February, the, the department meetings that Ms. Toh will have and all that is our vetting what we know and having the discussions around what's a wish list and what's a need and what's aligned to, to priorities and other things that are within the district. And so we'll continue that entire process. Ms. Toh takes the district leadership team through a, a few exercises, if you will. Once everything, a draft of the budget is in place, and we go through a few exercises to figure out, you know, how, how do we get it to a point that we are submitting a balanced budget to the board? December is critically important for us because the governor will release his budget. And even though we're in the second year of a biennium, we certainly have some visibility of what the second year is supposed to look like. And the reason I say supposed in capital letters and bold print is the prior two or three budgets, there was money in there for staff salaries for the status of quality of the SOQ-funded positions. None of those have occurred in the last three years because state revenue did whatever. And so that's why it's important to see, one, if the governor's going to adjust that second year of the biennium with any proposals that, that he makes. We're certainly hoping, superintendents and others, as we've discussed, that the general assembly will be in a different place on its budget this year than it was last year because it went way too long. And so we actually, we didn't get a state budget until after budgets were due to city council. And so. And so, um, that was problematic, and two-thirds of our budget is state funded. So for us, it's, it's a significant time issue. For districts that have a smaller percentage coming from the state, they are able to work through what's going on with that, so.
So, thank you, Dr. Boone. Uh, were there any thoughts on the budget that we have before us right now, so that we can get them to, uh, Ms. Pearl for consideration? Ms. Campson?
I have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm still a little unclear, so there's a pool of money for Norfolk Public Schools, and from that pool of money, we make a decision on how much comes to the school board? Is that a preset percentage of the budget, or how do we, how do we reach? In other words, I, I see the, the total on this, is that something that changes year to year based on how much money we get in, or...
That is totally driven by the school board's desires and what the amount of money that you ask us to put within the school board budget.
Okay.
We don't preset that. I mean, certainly, we start at, we make assumptions in, in the data that, uh, Ms. Toh and Ms. Ingram are working with, that at least level funded unless there's something that, that we've already talked about, that there's, like what happened during the recession, everybody had to, to, to make some reductions. But we don't vet the school board's budget. That's your discussion, you tell us how you want to populate your line items, and we put that in there. It's the rest of the budget that I propose to the board.
So, so when we spend this money, and it goes to the approval chain, it just goes, what, to the chair and then one out?
I mean, we, we're gonna approve the budget when we approve the...
When I'm now spending the money in the budget. And it, it has to get approved.
So it's a, the revenue stream is one thing. We have about four different revenue streams, state, local, federal, and sometimes some other grants. And so all of the school board's budget is local operating funds.
Right, I understand that.
I think there's a portion there. Um, in terms of the expenditures, once the board approves the final budget, so the board will approve the budget to send to council on April first, usually there has to be a reconciliation between the amount that council funds and what the proposed budget, what the budget that was sent. At that time, once the board makes the reconciliation and does its final approval, then expenditures are done in accordance with, uh, what has been approved in that final budget.
You're, I, thank you very much. So if we look at the budget we have now, which is, we, I'm looking at this year's budget, um, and we have concerns about certain items, and we're out of time, where do we go now? Because, you know, I have concerns about some of the items on here. That, um, I'm not sure that this is where I would choose to, to put the money, and that may not be the thing for the board, and I'll mention one example. Cause there, I've got a bunch of them marked. So for example, memberships. The Council of Great City Schools, thirty-nine thousand dollars. What are we getting for that thirty-nine thousand dollars? Because we're paying our own way to their conference, which is more money because, you know, we have travel, you know? The ninety-four thousand dollars for travel divided by seven members is thirteen thousand dollars a member. Seems like a lot to me, I'm new.
But I think your lead question is important, is what are we getting out of it? And that could go with any of the memberships that we have.
That's my question, what do we get for this, thirty-nine thousand?
So let me do, if I may, just a quick one on the Council of Great City Schools. The member, the dues for Council of Great City Schools is set by its board based on the school district size. And so th- that's, that's how that's determined. The, um, for the annual conference, the registration for the board chair and the superintendent or the board chairs designate is, is complimentary as part of the membership. Last spring, we had the Council of Great City Schools to come in and do reviews of our finance facilities and transportation. We, only thing we had to pay for were the costs associated with the various team members from coming around the country that did that. There's no cost for the actual, uh, work. We also get legislative advocacy and other pieces through the work that goes on, very similar to what would happen with the National School Board Association. The difference is, National School Board Association is open to all school boards across the nation. Council of Great City Schools is open to some of the largest school districts in, in each state, and therefore, tha- that's, that's the group that it's intended to do. So there's lots of service that we get, um, like I said, in terms of advocacy, legislative work, um, policy support. When we were dealing with, um, the other year, issues around transgender students, we were able to go to them and tap into their resource, uh, pool to see what they had there that could help us, uh, work through and make the considerations that we need to do. So it's, it's that type of support that comes from organizations, not only the Council of Great City Schools, but National School Board Association and others like that.
Well, you know, I think, thank you very much for that information, Dr. Boone. Uh, and, and I know this is due, but I, you know, Council of Great City Schools, thirty-nine thousand, the National School Board Association, fifteen thousand, Virginia School Board Association, eighteen thousand, seventy-two thousand dollars for those three memberships. You know, and, and as I said, I'm new, and certainly that was very helpful to see some of the things they do, but I think that these are items we might wanna revisit with the new board. Travel, ninety-four thousand dollars to go, you know, go to these things, seems like a lot. How much do school principals get?
Um, let me...
Ten thousand each.
Let me, let me provide a little context into that. I, I do remember us having a discussion about, um, the associations a while ago, a previous board, and it was looking at, um, where are we getting the bang for the buck, okay?
That, that was my question.
And, and, and so we actually pulled away possibly, I don't know, Rodney, do you remember which ones we, we might have pulled away from certain portions?
Prior to us, the, uh, I think they stopped using V S B As, all this policy work that we get, that we were talking about all these updates, you then end up having to do yourself, and you end up spending a whole lot more, so.
Well, but I, I seem to recall that we, we pulled away from maybe two, two memberships. Uh, and then we, we said we're gonna concentrate on the ones that we have right now. So that was a discussion that another board had had, so I think it's, it's, it's a valid concern.
We're ready to have a discussion with the current board.
Travel, the, the reason that travel, um, appears, um, high is because we were thinking that we were gonna have new board members on, and there would be lots of conferences that, um, would assist with board development, and we wanted to make sure that those funds were available in the budget. So I think really what we have is, we have a bottom line here, we have four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, basically. This is not, what we send to Pearl is not going to be a final number. It can change and move with some of the conversations that we have about memberships and other items that, and folks will have some suggestions on. But in general, what I need to get a sense from you all, uh, is with these big items here, is there anything that you would want to have different, or are you okay with this budget line item?
I'm not okay with the budget. If I can, in, in the ass, interest of time, Ms. Toh always said that November ninth is not your fixed deadline, believe me, we have a lot of work to do other than just the school board's budget. So I would recommend that you take some more time. We certainly need it by the first of the year to try to get at some bottom line pieces, but you all take some time and, and have some other discussions.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
Include it on other agendas so that, uh, uh, again, um, you can be ready to push it out, and, and that won't hold up what we're working on. We have plenty to work on. We'll do a placeholder in the budget of the four twenty-four, or whatever that amount is. But again, I propose you dispose, but except for this line, this, this budget sa- uh, category. And so whatever it is at the end, but we'll just do a placeholder with four twenty-four and work from there until you, the board can have substantive conversations about the budget.
That's very helpful, because I do have some concerns that I, in those two areas, in those two areas. I mean, I know salaries are in here for the clerk and, and, and the, whatever it is, what we call what we get.
Stipend.
Uh, stipend, thank you, that would be a little more accurate than salary, that's for sure. But, uh, I mean, when I compare this to what they get in the schoolhouse, I have a concern.
Well, and I'm not pushing back, but do recognize that the district also, and as you're aware, not all of them, we, our schools aren't one hundred percent site-based managed, so all money that's available to schools doesn't show up in their budgets. So we also support schools with activities and events beyond what's in their actual school budget.
I saw, I saw some hands over here, Ms. Smith.
What is Swagit encoder, software data recovery?
It's...
Just, what is it?
It's the, uh, uh, software that allows for the, uh, electronic online streaming of our, of our meetings.
Okay.
Notice I left those areas alone because I didn't know what they were either.
But I figured it was I T I T.
New technology, equipment purchases, computer related, what type of items is hardware or something?
Dr. Gabriel?
Which, yeah, which, which line item are you on right now?
So normally...
Be from the bottom.
Oh, mm-hmm.
You know, normally the chair, vice chair will sit down with the board clerk. And so the board clerk, who has the responsibility over the, the day-to-day operations of the office, will present various needs that are needed to operate the office. And so sometimes you may see something in there for hotspots, you may see something in there dealing with different, different needs, advertising, we talked about doing public hearings, so when, uh, a public hearing is held, they have to do an advertising in the, in the newspaper. Those types of things are falling in here. It's not really much in here, they like accrue to the benefit of, you know, like an individual school board member outside of the professional development that, uh, Dr. Gabriel mentioned earlier.
And for example, excuse me, ma'am. For example, the budget hearing that we're announcing for the twenty-eighth of November, we've, uh, the deputy clerk has, has filed that with the paper, and that's gonna cost us probably a couple thousand dollars. But that's a, a state requirement to make sure that those are posted, so that type of thing is included in that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Basine?
And I'll, I'll just throw a couple of items that I have question about whether we need to have, unless you wanna table this for another time, but since I have it here, the equipment maintenance, uh, contract for five thousand, do we, does it really need to, uh, be five thousand? Because I don't believe that we've exhausted that.
The equipment maintenance, um, that's weekly charges, that's copier, every time you make copies.
Every time you make copies, yeah, that's where that comes from.
All right. I wanted to let you finish, but, uh, Mr. Butts actually has a comment that he wants to make. It might answer your question.
Okay.
Just a thought, just respects to the, the budget, the proposal. Um, you'll find, Ms. Campson and others, that this budget is higher than past budgets with the idea, particularly with travel. Um, I think it went up considerably based on the idea that board members are new, give them more opportunities to travel to different events. But we can say that with some of these, um, ideas, with some of the cost, um, when it comes to printing, there is, is based on clicks, and so we have to pay for printing and copies that are made. So some of the, the, the items are pretty standard. Uh, but what I can do, if the board wants, I can send you, um, what the budget was before it was increased based on the new membership, that way we can kinda gauge then what would be the, the best new norm for you.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
To that point, I actually was gonna request, maybe if he can send the last three years, 'cause then you can see that.
Okay, all right. So what we'll do is, we'll get the last three years' budget. We will look into perhaps some return on investment items for the memberships that we have, and then we will come back in agenda planning and plan out another discussion for board budget.
Thank you.
And if there are any other thoughts that come up between now and then, go ahead and send them to, to us, uh, myself, uh, Carlos, and probably Mr. Butts also, and, uh, and Dr. Boone. And, um, and that way we can have a heads up on it.
Thank you very much, and thanks for listening to my concern.
Okay, Ms. Basine?
Yeah?
And I'm, I'm just gonna take a ten-second plea to give strong, strong consideration to board professional development. I can't tell you how important it is for us and how that directly translates into high student achievement. So I'm gonna put that plug in there, that's why we committed to that last year when we were developing the budget, um, and I hope that, uh, everyone gives that some serious, serious thought.
Well, you know, I think we do, I think the concern that I have, besides, in fact, it's a lot of money, is the gap between what we're spending for P D and what the people that are actually touching children every day are receiving for theirs. You know, and maybe it'll turn out that it looks more balanced, but as my own personal experience is fifteen years in the principalship, no.
And hopefully we've made adjustments to how that happens, because you also consider in professional development, when we host, for example, the guided reading training, we're training hundreds of teachers, and so it's not that we get economy of scale, if you will. So is it in the school's individual budget? No, but the district is paying for, through the set aside that we have for P D, that to happen for hundreds of teachers.
Right, and I think that's a, I think that would be a good education point, perhaps, because I do think that might, um, may increase the comfort in what and why.
Maybe if we didn't travel, maybe if we had them come here too. With all the traveling that we do, which is what costs so much money.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I just was gonna let you know, I'm gonna send a, over the last few years, uh, in the school board budget, we had, uh, set aside, uh, funds for, uh, being able to contract with, uh, outside legal counsel as needed. So I'm gonna send a memo and recommendations and research that I've been doing on, uh, in that area. So you'll get that one day next week.
My list, too.
All right, and speaking of training, we have the V S B A regional conference, which will be in a week or two, next week?
Next week.
Next week?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and look forward to seeing you all there.
The five K is free if anyone wants to join me.
Okay, five K, all right. Uh-huh, yep, we can do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm running home to get my running shoes out right now.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much to Dr. Boone and team for all of their work this evening, we sincerely appreciate it. And with that being said, meeting is adjourned.